Good evening, everyone, and good evening, residents of Litchfield, and welcome to the January 9th, 2019 School Board Meeting. I'd like to begin with a pledge of allegiance. Pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
For those of you at home, if you're planning to come down to the meeting, we have moved the beginning of the meeting to the media room. So this evening, we have the pleasure of having our reps with us. Mr. Bowen, Ms. LaSalle, Mr. McLean, and Mr. Prue. Gentlemen, thank you very much for coming. The school board, in conversations, asked to have the reps here just to have some conversation as far as, I mean, our school is along with others, but we'll just work on ours, struggling as far as receiving aid, how that handcuffs us in different areas, the increase in teacher retirement, and SB 193, just to name a few. I'm certain there are many school districts out there, but ours in particular, we're looking at about 80 percent, at least, of our budget is for benefits and salaries. And it just seems to be getting more and more, and then the aid is less. I know Cory, our BA, did an analysis that if our budget was flat this year, would the increase or still in tax?
We would still, tax rate increase would still be 24 cents or about that. Level funding our general fund budget, a dollar for dollar.
And really, we asked you here this evening to get your input as far as the schools are going, or the state's going, as far as aid to the schools.
If I may, I'm on the education committee. This is my fifth term on the education committee, excuse me, my sixth term total. So I'm well aware what's going on. I wasn't there last session, but skip one. But anyway, you mentioned SB 193. You don't have to worry about that this year, okay? With the makeup of the House, it's gone. But the point was, if it was there, I would have voted for it anyway because, to me, it's not the school, it's the children. And don't believe the amount of money that was going to be lost, that was a big lie, and by, set up even by our finance committee, and that the member that did that is no longer there. He saw the writing on the wall. But those numbers were based on a big if, which would never happen. It was the same thing that happened with charter schools. Oh, the school's gonna lose all this money, and it never happened. But my, also too, the whole thing on, well, money going to religious schools. Well, if that ever went to Supreme Federal Court, it would be found unconstitutional, has it been all across the country. The Blaine Amendment, which happened in 1877, was set up initially, it was tried to be a U.S. Constitution amendment, and it failed. So Senator Blaine from Maine went around, and never got into the Maine Constitution, went around all the states to put it in their constitution. And it basically came from, started in Massachusetts, when even in Massachusetts, they were giving aid to religious schools. Except when the Irish and Italians came in and said, "Well, don't we get aid for our Catholic schools?" And that's where it started. It was, of course, even way back 18th, 19th century even, a lot of your schools, public schools, were religious schools. They took place in the local church. So the issue was discrimination for basically Catholics, I mean, for Irish and Italians. But anyway, but it's not there this year, anyway. So it's gone.
I understand that the bill right now is kind of just sitting there. But the ramifications are still felt at different school districts. And I'll explain why, and it has to do also with as far as monies we're getting from the state. Well, the state's also asking us to pay monies. And we have a situation here at this particular school, that we have a student who lives in Litchfield, had been going to Pinkerton for two years, and came to us to ask us to pay her tuition to Pinkerton because she wanted to continue her last two years at Pinkerton because they offered courses we didn't offer.
Right. But that's up to the two superintendents, right?
It went to the state board. State board told us we had to pay her tuition.
Well, that's, that's not law then, because the law is both superintendents have to agree, which I somewhat disagree with, maybe just the receiving superintendent should agree. But anyway, because, I mean, what's best for the child? And that's what we've always done when I was on the school board.
Okay, but this is, well, then, if it's best for the child, then shouldn't the state have to be required to pay?
Yeah, I don't think, yeah, in that case, yeah, I don't know what the issue was.
Exactly what I just said.
Or $8,000 cost.
I know, I know, yeah, yeah.
No, the student had been attending Pinkerton, had lived in Pinkerton with her dad. Her dad passed.
Okay. Oh, okay. Yeah, I've had those, we've had, when I was on the school board, we had those same issues, and we deemed it at that point, because we had that issue before with, and we always, when I was on the school board, we voted what best for the child, and the child was that, that school should finish that school. And we've had those issues when I was on the school board.
And the school district should pay, not the state?
Yes, the school district paid. I mean, it's no different, I mean, we also had an issue when I was on the school board of Hudson and Litchfield just trading a student, one for one. It was two issues the same way. One was the kid grew up in Litchfield, moved to, parents divorced, and went to Hudson, and vice versa. So the superintendents agreed that, hey, we'll just, everybody was happy, just let them finish where they were at. You know, so, yeah, it's, yeah, those things are, yeah, I think it's, in that case, I think it was best for the school. I mean, best for the student, then they should be able to finish, I think, where they started.
Is that a, is that a very common occurrence, or is that a rarity?
No, no.
It's rare, but I hope it doesn't become a common occurrence, because it seems to be in other districts happening also, so it's becoming, I think, more of a common occurrence.
Right, yeah. Yeah, now, the thing is, on the funding, you know, your funding is based on number of students, basically, I mean, and there's a lot of other stuff thrown in. And this came about in 2007. The current formula is really based on what happened in 2007. That session, Litchfield had no representation. So nobody from Litchfield fighting that. We lost $2 million, you know, I think probably remember that, when it was supposed to take effect, I think, in 2011, and if you're around, you remember that, you know? And luckily, in 2011, we put in the stabilization so nobody was going to lose money, okay? So we kept the $2 million. But the problem is, according to the formula, we're $2 million more than, according to the formula, we should be getting. So it came out, we start a stabilization, starting, I think, next year, where that money will slowly decrease, that, according to the current formula, we're supposed to get. Now, we tried to change the formula two years ago, but we fasted on education, but the finance committee killed it, even though it wasn't going to spend any more money, we were just moving money around. There's a bill in this year to do away with that stabilization. So hopefully, if that fast passes, you won't lose any money, everybody will be staying the same. There's another bill in there to redo the formula, which I already told the sponsor, I will not support it because, well, how do any of these formulas work, how it's gonna pass, is every rep has got to look at the spreadsheet and see if their school district loses money or makes money, okay? And if more make money, then it'll pass. If they lose money, then might not. And the 2007 one, for example, Litchfield lost $2 million, Manchester got $33 million. The thing is, if you look tax rate-wise, it's the same. $33 million in Manchester, the same as $2 million in Litchfield on the tax rate. So the thing is, but, so everybody got upset in 2011 when Manchester lost their $33 million. But the thing is, it, like I said, it's no big deal. I think they should look at tax rate. The problem with the bill coming up this year is Litchfield, it doesn't gain or lose anything, it stays the same. But I have a problem when they're paying for bad behavior. So in these formulas, they have, if your school does bad in math, in the math test, we're gonna give you more money. If your school does bad in English, we're gonna give you more money. Now, that's like saying, a kid comes home with a D, oh, we're gonna give you money because hopefully you'll make it a C next time. You know, that doesn't work. We should maybe, now, also too, it also gives more money to school districts that have a high level of kids on free and reduced lunch. To me, that's double dipping. You're already getting Title I money. Now, I see in Manchester where that's an issue, but I think maybe what they should do, rather than free and reduced lunch, is how many different languages do you have to teach in? You know, that's Manchester's problem. But maybe there should be a higher rate on that. But the thing is, yeah, it's, so the new formula this year, there may be others. I haven't seen them all yet, but I know the current one, do away with stabilization, definitely, I think that'll get a lot of support, because there's a lot of other towns are going to be hurting if they, you know, if that doesn't go away, like you're gonna lose the 4 percent, and then it keeps going down. But the whole formula needs to change, but, like I said, that takes a long time to come up with a new formula, because also in Litchfield, it's all, they also use median household income, which isn't, to me, is also not a fair comparison, which I fought back in '05 and '06 when it come up in the formula, because if you compare Litchfield, where, in most cases, both parents work, so if you look at the median male income, and the median female income, and the median household income, you add the male and female together, it comes darn close to the median household income. If you look at Manchester, and even Ashwood, where there's a lot of single-parent families, you look at the single male income, and it's nearly the same as the household income. So you're comparing apples with oranges, so it shouldn't even use that amount. I mean, it's, I mean, for example, if you compare Litchfield with Hollis, not that much different, but in Hollis, probably only one parent works, okay? And they have a high, you know, because Hollis is fairly rich. So there's a lot of stuff that needs to be done in the formulas.
How is the commercial base of a particular town figured into the rate?
That's the problem. I know, and that's what I would like to see, too, is what's, I mean, there's no such thing anymore as donor town, so I think we need to also do away with the state education property tax, because that's local. I mean, none of that money leaves the town, it stays in Litchfield, so. But the problem is, what that costs you is how many times, every so many years, they come around to reappraise your house, only because the way the law is, you've got to be equalized to the whole state. But if we didn't have that tax, they don't have to do that appraisal every couple of years. You know, that saves money on the town side. But, yeah, there's a lot of problems with the formula, but it got, like I said, it depends on, now, one of the things I think, one of the things I should do is, since there's a decrease in school population across the state, let's raise and see how much money in the trust fund, which is, comes from the lottery, and some other money that goes into the state trust fund for education trust, is, what's, let's do it like a census, how many kids and how much money, okay? And then use that per student, rather than, 3,600 per student now is the baseline, and add it up. So let's, let's increase that, you know, if the money's available. But that's, that's probably the only way. I mean, because it's based on per student, and if the student population decreases, then that's less money. And like you said, I know, I was on the school board, yeah, it's, it's, it's benefits and that kind of stuff, too, I mean, that, it's hurt.
It's just becoming more and more of a burden on the town individuals than it is as far as statewide. I just wonder if you gentlemen have, anyone else has anything to add, or thoughts on the?
Well, I compliment you guys for investigating any source of funds, you know? And certainly, there are things at the state, like, for instance, the formula and equalization and so forth. We always have to keep a, keep a good eye on that. To my way of thinking, you know, the, the whole idea, as Tara said, with respect to property poor towns, there should be some sort of equalization, and, and I don't think that's working the way it's, the way it's currently set up. It's not working that way. I personally am a, am a fan of local taxation. You know, whenever you get the state involved, you know, you're always got these tugging back and forth, and you run into these crises when, when situations, you know, the political climate in Concord, the wind shifts one way or the other, and, you know, you're left out in the cold. To my way of thinking, you're much better off when, when you go to the Budget Committee, and the people can go to the Budget Committee sessions, and they can see where their money's going, it gets them involved and so forth. And whenever, whenever you send money off to the state, which we're doing, with the statewide property tax, and there's always a tug of war as to when it comes back. So, you know, from, from my standpoint, I will always pledge to make sure that whenever there's, one of these formulas comes up, that we will always make sure that, that we have a voice with respect to that formula, and that, based upon whatever, whatever the bill is, that Litchfield gets its fair share. But the problem is, the state takes and, you know, the state gives and the state takes away. And, you know, I think we'd all be better off if we just kept our money in town.
Also, too, just a quickie on that, it's not just the state funding, it's also the state and federal mandates that are put on you, which I've always fought against, and I will continue to fight against. I mean, Common Core was a good disaster, and which I fought since it came about. But, I mean, keep the, since, I was on the New England Board of High Ed, and one of the things we came up with, looking at numbers, and if you took all 50 states, had separate countries, back before No Child Left Behind, which was another disaster, and Common Core, Massachusetts, New Hampshire were in the top 10 in the world, okay? Now, this whole country is what, 20th or something in the world, thanks to the federal government involvement? So, I mean, that's, and, and then the state doing what the feds say. The thing is, we should, I have no problem with us in Litchfield, or any other town or whatnot, for coming up with our own curriculum, and we're not going to cheat our kids, they're our kids, right? You know, we're gonna do what's best, and we don't need the state or federal government telling us how to teach. We were a whole lot better off before that, when there was competition, our states saying, hey, we do better than you, you know, so. But everything was made equal, which is dumbing down everybody.
So I think, you know, Rich is right, you know, local control is better. We have to look at whatever funding formulas come up there, and, but unfortunately, with the recent Supreme Court decisions going back, you don't have full local control. And, you know, unfortunately, that does have the, the impact of rewarding some bad behavior, and we see that, you know, with the statewide pensions, and how that kind of got us into some trouble as well. But, you know, that's kind of the hole we dug, and while local control is great, we do have these court decisions that we have to contend with. So at this point, what we have to do is, we have to go back, we have to look at the, the details of the funding formula, and try to have it as beneficial and as equitable as possible. That's really all we can do at this point.
I don't have much to add, I pretty much covered it, but, you know, I know I'll be looking at it even more closely now, and trying to make sure that we get what we can, or the best we can.
So Ralph, you mentioned, like, on one of the charts, as far as what the dollars in aid, and that $2 million that we did receive, we're not supposed to receive, will go away, but yet, everything will stay the same. So how will that work?
Well, the bill up on the state, to do away with that reduction, that's one of the simple ones. In other words, let's leave everything the same. In other words, you don't get the 4 percent here, or every year, you know, so. Then, but like I said, there's other bills also dealing with the formula, and I haven't seen them all because they're not all out yet. I seen the one, and with, and actually, the sponsor also have the spreadsheet, and I'm going, no. But there's probably others, and like I said, it really comes down to what each town, what reps sees, what their school district is getting or losing. And, you know, you gotta have more getting, more on the plus side, or it's not gonna pass. But then, you know, I would like to see the per pupil amount increase, because the whole school population in the state is going down, and I think Litchfield were pretty steady. But, so, there should be more money, you know? So, so that's something I would like to take a look at, what's, what, what amount is there? You know?
So if I understand right, you're saying that the adequacy portion was supposed to be the same across the state per head?
Right.
But stabilization, basically, was the buffer, and so that basically allowed certain towns, which we're seeing a big drop, to kind of buffer that.
Well, it wasn't stabilization, stabilization was the fix for the formula that came up with, so, schools getting more because of free and reduced lunch, schools getting more for this and that, you know, which, yeah, it's, you know, so poor school districts, maybe you can use that, getting more money than rich school districts like Litchfield. Well, no, that's not true. But anyway, but, you know, but one of the problems that we came up with, which was the big argument in 2011, when we were going over fixing the 2007 one, was the stabilization. The town of Bedford was getting more money, and Litchfield was losing, and we're going, what's wrong with this picture? To me, when they had donor towns, Bedford should have been a donor town. You know what I mean? The size of the town, and their commercial base, you know, whatnot. Now, pretty much a donor town like New England and whatnot has pretty much gone away. So there's really no need for the statewide property tax, because Litchfield's money stays in Litchfield, it doesn't go to the state at all. You know, so all the town, all the towns are the same, Manchester stays in Manchester, you know, it doesn't go anywhere, so. Yeah, so, yeah, there's, we're looking at it, there's gotta be other formulas coming up, and, yeah, definitely, like I said, 2007, nobody from Litchfield was there. That was when we had, vote for no more than 13, and Hudson took them off, you know? And that, that's gone now. We have our own two, and we have two flotillas with Manchester. So we got, we got our own voice back.
It's just scary, looking at the current trend, where we might be in several years from now, as far as funding from the state, and the tax impact on the town.
Well, too, it's, there's only, the state, it's not like the federal government, the state only has X amount of money. So, and I've always told people that say, hey, we need more money for this, okay, who should we take it from? You know, there's only a finite amount of money. And sometimes, yeah, there's, the education fund goes up because a lot of people betting, you know, in the lotteries and stuff, but, and other funds going into that. But, yeah, I'm sure, and the revenue was high this year, even though we lowered the business profit stacks, revenue went up for the state. You know, how that works, and, yeah, companies invest, and hire more, and everybody gets more money. So that's, so it went up. Now, there might be bad years when things go down, so, you know, it's, it's kind of hard to say. I mean, we're, we are a local, everything is local, there's no, I think there's probably some bills in this year for state sales tax, but, I mean, okay, Nashville, you vote for that, then watch Fesenley Mall close, you know, and that kind of stuff, so that, you know? Or an income tax, but, you know, I mean, those things are usually no-no's for everybody, you know? So, yeah, you're spending less on property tax, but you're increasing other taxes, yeah.
I think the, the, the problem that you run into, Brian, is that if you're, if you're looking to the state for tax relief to increase revenues, to, for local property tax relief, you have to think about the, the overall priority within the state. The way the tax structure is right now, we have a finite amount of money with respect to state revenues. I think everybody understands that. I had a, a division head at the state level, very high-level manpower-intensive division head, said, told me with a straight face that he could justify doubling his manpower, okay? Well, every department at the state level is in that situation. So we're, we're in a situation, and I think we all feel it, that we have to make some really tough choices when it comes to priorities. The, in my own case, I think about my, the land of my childhood, which was Illinois. I don't know if you've been, if you've kept up with the status of the state of Illinois. I would venture to say that the, that the state of Illinois spends probably double per pupil of what New Hampshire does, and probably gets a lot less out of it. And what's happened is that, over the years, I mean, we're, we're all friends here, friends and neighbors, and we're all together, I think we all have the same objectives. But politicians have, for too long, said yes to everything that comes along. I have a very good friend, who I was a neighbor, a teammate, a fraternity brother, who was a superintendent, and a, he was a career educator in state of Illinois, totally within the state of Illinois, finished as a superintendent of a, of a small rural community, much like Litchfield, about the same size. I was shocked to see that his pension is $14,000 a month, $14,000 a month. Now, I don't know what you're anticipating, right? But that's true. Now, if you look at the state of Illinois, the state of Illinois is bankrupt. They don't know where the next dollar's coming from. They're shutting, they're shutting things down. Now they have an outflow, the new governor is talking about a graduated income tax, so they can sock it to the higher-income people more, which is gonna make more people go out. So that's, that's what happens when politicians say yes too often. And that's been happening for 30 years, and that's where they are. Our method of taxation, to me, is, you know, we can come in here as representatives in Concord with our pockets out, because we don't have a lot of money, you know? Now, it's possible that we could get into some pension issues, which, you know, we don't have nearly the pension issues that Illinois has, but you have to watch that very closely. Franklin Roosevelt, who we all know was one of the, one of the, the person who got us out of the Depression, he set up the social welfare system for the country. He was dead-set against public employee unions. And what he said was, that it's impossible for neighbors to say no to people who come for pay raises. So what happens is, you say yes, and you say yes, and you say yes. So, you know, I think from my standpoint, and I don't mean to speak for everybody, but we're right now in a situation where we have to make, make sure on a state level that New Hampshire doesn't become New Massachusetts. And there are those who want that in the worst way. And, you know, that'll be over my dead body, you know? But believe me, that we, we're very conscious of that. So, you know, I applaud you for bringing us here to find out, you know, what's going on, is there anything we can do, and so forth. Believe me, I've learned some things, but we have to, we have to be very conscious and very cognizant of those formulas, because, like Ralph said, you know, we didn't have anybody from Litchfield was up there, you know, from the town of Litchfield, when we got messed up on the formula, and that would have really clobbered us. But that doesn't say that that isn't gonna happen, but we're gonna be, we're conscious of that. But, you know, the, there isn't, there isn't a lot of money to go around.
I would suggest maybe in June, having us back again, same thing, so we can tell you what happened, what other laws and whatnot.
The other problem I see is what we do-
The other problem I see is what we do this year, somebody can undo in two years.
Yep.
You know, so trying to plan out in the future is really hard at the state level because, as you can see, some things are already getting overturned or planned to get overturned and it's hard to tell other legislators what they can or can't do, you know? So we make a great schedule or, and it gets undone in two years. So to, to plan on money coming forward constantly at the same rate is really, really hard, you know? So that's what I caution. And, and like you've heard, X amount of dollars coming in, X amount of dollars going out. And we play that game of who gets them. And it's very hard sometimes to...
The good news is people are betting on Keno like crazy.
Yes.
I can't even spell Keno.
You don't have to spell it. Play it.
There's no place in town, I think, and that's, that's a good point because there's a bill this year to do away with the Keno revenue for kindergarten. So one of the sales for kindergarten for making it pass is we'll use the Keno revenue. So now there's a bill, no, we don't need that. We'll just get it out of the...
You're going to have to sell it.
...教育 education fund. So, you know, that's another reduction that naturally I'll be fighting on that one.
So will the profits from the Keno go to the education fund?
Well, the problem, the Keno goes to offset kindergarten.
Full day kindergarten.
Full day kindergarten. So the thing is, if you take the Keno, now where's that money going to go? You know, right to the general fund to use for anything else.
Well, I think, you know, I think one of the things that I struggle with, and I'm sure the other members of the board kind of have been there too, is that, you know, we tried to pass a new elementary school building 10, 12 years ago.
Yeah.
And it didn't pass. And, and that was with building aid.
Right, that was no building aid.
Right. So there, there's been a moratorium now.
That was got away in seven and eight, too. That was...
Right, right. And it came back and it was voted down again and voted down again. We don't, we still need a new elementary school, in my opinion. You know, we keep, we keep revamping and renovating and making things work and purchasing portable classrooms for our students. Without state aid, without, without reinstituting state building aid, we're never going to be able to get another, a brand, a new elementary school, which we need.
But it killed, it killed the building aid beside what happened in '07, '08. They said, hey, because what, part of the budget every year was to pay all the school districts their building aid out of the budget. But somebody had this brilliant idea of, no, let's take all the money we owe for building aid for the next 20 years or whatever, 30 years in some cases, and bond it. So now we're still paying, so that building aid that should have been going to the town is going to pay off that bond with the legislature in there, not to, not thinking, no common sense, voted to bond it. So I've got a feeling, you know, in a, I don't know how, when that bond's going to run out. Hopefully, it was, it's going to take a while. Then maybe some building aid come back. But also, building aid started because the state was growing like crazy.
Mm-hmm.
Okay? So it was then decided, well, the state should maybe help pay for the schools. But now the state isn't growing, you know? So, you know, it's kind of hard for a lot of people to say, to put it back.
Well, I, I mean, if you read the headlines, you know, we've, we've been, we've had a surplus at least the last two years. We've, you know, that, that, that tightening of our belts that happened 10 years ago, you know, is kind of, it worked and, and now we're on a more profitable trend.
How buildings are aging.
And our buildings have continued to age ever since. So we're, I mean, we're in a place where if we, if we, you know, propose a new building, it's, it's on our taxpayers.
There's a lot of other priorities at the state level though as well. You have the ongoing drug crisis. You know, the governor really is looking at the, the mental health situation, you know, and, and what we do with that and the, the, the lack of facilities there. So, you know, while you're right and, and there is surplus money now coming in, there's also a lot of other things that have been on the back burner too. So when, when you're looking at that, you know, we, we have the disabled, the developmental disability community, all these other things. So, and so it has to be looked at the whole situation.
Right.
So, yeah, that's where it is.
It's just not a priority.
Yeah.
Well, yeah. We'll see what happens when the bond gets paid.
The state is not growing. Actually, a lot of people are leaving. So that's another problem.
People are getting older and they're not, you know.
I think the other trap we fall into though is that just because at one point you got something, doesn't mean it's always going to be there, you know? And we would like it to be. We would always like it to ratchet up, but that's just not the reality. And I understand what you're saying about building aid. But I, I think the, the issue that sometimes people fall into is that, you know, well, we used to get building aid and now we don't. Well, we didn't have a opioid crisis, you know, the way we do now.
We should have taken the building aid when we could have.
Yeah, I mean, that's the problem. There, there are so many other things that needs in the state that, I got a rude awakening when I went up to the State House and saw how many things the state does and is responsible for and needs money for, and everybody wants money and there's just so much. So what you could do years ago may never happen again because there are just so many other things and, and like Mark was saying, that there are different populations that are requiring a lot more care and such.
In 11 and 12, when we cut the budgets for pretty much everybody, everybody was screaming, oh, and like we cut DOT spending, oh, we won't have the plows. My argument is no. You keep the plow drivers, you hire man, you get, do what other businesses do. You get rid of middle management. I've gone through this when I was working. I mean, and somebody even told me at the state police, there's seven levels of management before the trooper on the ground. To me, that's one way of cutting spending and still keeping the same number of people working, you know? And the same with the D, no, you don't cut the people doing the plowing and the fixing the roads. You cut the management, which is how big business works. Because I remember we've had layoffs when I was working and it was always middle management got cut. That's why one of the things I said, no way I'm going at the middle management. I'm going at the first level that gets cut. So biz, I mean, the state needs to work the same way.
But in a lot of different things, Ralph, there is different levels, all right?
Yeah.
I think the army.
Oh.
It's not just a soldier.
Well, oh, yeah, yeah.
You talk about the state police, I mean, you never know what you need as far as levels.
I know, yeah.
I mean, that's your responsibility as far as representatives decide, decide what's needed.
Right.
I think the, there, there are other, Litchfield is not alone with, with its funding issues.
All right.
Certainly, Berlin, I don't know if you've heard about Berlin is thinking of closing schools, you know? Of course, they have, they have some really difficult economic issues, you know? But I, I think that, you know, we all want to keep Litchfield the very best place that it possibly could be and...
And now we have four voices.
Yeah, we appreciate that.
Mm-hmm.
And we look forward to seeing you come back in June and hopefully bring us some good news.
Yeah. And for example, I was in Pelham last night, no, Monday night, yeah, at a, at a meeting and they were looking at, and thereby somebody looking at building a new school in Pelham. And Pelham's school population had been really nose diving. And somebody said, looking at the forecast for students in, in 2022, they're going to be at 1975 levels. You know, so, hey, wait a minute, school for what? You know, and so, and Litchfield, I know, is pretty much at its building level. Unless they rezone the south end, which could happen because, you know, that was zone commercial light industrial mainly because the circumferential highway was supposed to go through, you know, that'll never happen. So that, that land could be sued to be residential.
On the, on a positive note, I did see that, that local young people are moving back into, into New Hampshire, which for years, you know, we, we have a present company accepted, but New Hampshire has a, has, you know, the most aged population in the country, or one of the most. So we need more young people to move in.
That's because of the good living here in New Hampshire, Rich.
What's that?
That's because of the good living here in New Hampshire.
Some of it, yes. Yeah. So, yeah, so a couple of other things I wanted to bring up, the bills that are coming up. The bill coming up, HB 225, or I think, wait, I missed one, which, back in 2012, I think it was, yeah, 226, I'm sorry, HB 226. We changed the tenure or renomination from three to five years because I remember when I was on the school board, we'd come in and said, well, the superintendent's saying, well, yeah, this is three years, but we think it'll work and we, so, and then it didn't, you know? So we changed it from three to five, which I think helps everybody. The person that's coming on and the school board, you could, you have, you can say, oh, yeah, let's keep that person for another year, rather than, you know, that's an F, let's, you know? So they tried to change back, back down from five to three. So that's something you might want to look into. Because I think it's a, three to five is a win-win for both, you know? Yeah, so I don't see that being a, being a problem. But, you know, it's, the, the union is pushing that. But, so that, like, so seven years after, instead of trying to change it. Also, I don't know if you know about this, but in last year, a bill passed finally. I know this was one I had done four or five years earlier, but kept getting vetoed. So it finally got passed last year on surveys. So I don't know about it. It's basically, it says that the school districts to adopt the policy governing the administration of non-academic surveys or questionnaires to students. And basically you have to give, publish the survey if you're going to do it 10 days before and, and, and parents can opt, have to opt in, except for the CDC one, which I tried to get out too because I remember when I was on the school board and my granddaughter was in, in, in school, high school. The CDC one is, is a big joke to most students. They know about it and actually they Facebook and tell, hey, let's answer all the drug questions this way. Let's answer, so, and I remember our principal came in and said, with the shocking results, I said, wait a minute. All the kids took this as an open book thing. Hey, hey, Mary, how many times your, your boyfriend beat you? And they put that down. I mean, how many times you get drunk, you know? And so it's not, it's, it's, but parents are allowed to opt out of that one. But anyway, any other survey and non-academic surveys means surveys, questionnaires, or other documents designed to elicit information about a student's social behavior, family life, religion, politics, sexual organization, sexual activity, drug use, or any other related, information not related to a student's academics. And that even means in the classroom. In other words, we've had these cases where teachers have said, although this, 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 you know, no, you can't do that. So that, so I just, I mean, not, real benefit, simply you know about it and make a policy, but also for the people out there, you know, they know that's the law now.
I have a question. Have you seen any innovative ways that schools are generating revenue? Obviously, like food service is an income generator, grants, any other innovative...
Well, I noticed, I think you're doing some of that. I know, I see signs up at the ball field for, for sponsors. Now, I, because I mentioned that when I was on the school board because I was umpiring softball some years ago and I, we're doing a tournament down at Timber Lane. And every one of their fields had big signs on it and who's paying for the field? You know, and that's, that's one way of generating revenue. I mean, just look, look at your field, which is the little league field, which belongs to the school district. I mean, that's got, the little league is getting all that money to keep that field that, even though it belongs to the school district, to keep that field up based on sponsors. That's one way of doing it. I mean, that kind of thing. But some people are against that, but I'm not. I mean, if you can, you know, and that's not an academic thing if you look at, you know, for getting sponsors or something like that.
One thing that I, I would like to see happen, and I guess I'd be talking with Cory more than most people, is that we have a very limited number of businesses in town.
Right.
And whenever somebody here at the school is looking for some sort of a sponsorship, well, they have, they go boom, 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 boom. Well, I'm good friends with one of these business owners and he says, you know, he says, it never ends, you know? It's like five or six people, you know, coming in for whatever. I was up there one day and it was a, there was a cheerleader, some sort of sponsored thing. And what I, what I would hope is that we would look at businesses if there's any way that we can, we can patronize businesses for products and not say, not say, you know, spend more than we would otherwise, but if, but look to local businesses to see if we can, we can patronize them because, you know, they really do. Without these businesses, these kids would have a hard time getting anything. I mean, you know, you look at the, at any of the fields and you can see the, the, the signs and so forth. And a lot of people bend over backwards to support not only the kids, but the, the school as a whole. So I would hope that whenever possible, and I don't know about food service, I don't know how we can do that, but, but, you know, for other things, supplies and stuff for building maintenance and, and so forth, if we could possibly support the local businesses, you know? And I'm not saying break the bank. I'm just saying, you know, just keep them in mind when you, when you're doing those sorts of things.
I can't agree with you more, Rich. I mean, the few businesses we do have here have been beyond generous as far as what they've done and continued to do as far as sponsorship. I mean, from calendars to mugs to coupons, it's just, it's just endless. I couldn't, the few businesses we have here, I couldn't imagine only one because you'd be like looking out the door waiting, here comes the next one.
I thought where you were going with that was going to be like a top-level donor strategy, you know what I mean?
Well, that, you know, that's something that Mike and I have talked about and, you know, there's, there's, and, and Brian also, you know, there, there's that also. And when the time comes, you know, we really need to put our heads together and, and, you know, for, for some sort of large endeavor. But, and that needs to be done and a community-based effort. But, but I was talking mainly about supporting, given some of these businesses.
Our business.
Yeah, our business. And again, I'm not saying breaking the bank on it, but just keep them in mind, you know?
Yeah. And for sponsorships, hey, it doesn't have to be in town. It could be, I mean, we're in the center of a big, big area. I mean, you know?
I don't know if anyone in the community out there right now has any questions for the representatives at this time?
What's your Twitter handle?
I don't do Twitter either.
That's what you was, Rich.
I got a handle, but I don't use it.
At Brian Burke.
Yeah, yeah. We'll talk on Facebook.
Yeah.
Gentlemen, thank you very much.
Yeah.
Thank you for having us.
Just quickly, I, I mean, I'll give you my, my card, but, and I don't use the state, just rgbohm@comcast.net. So it's easy if anybody out there can remember it. And just put on it, I mean, in the subject that, from Litchfield, because you'd be surprised the, even out-of-country stuff we get.
No.
The biggest emails we got, I've gotten over the years have been the speed limits on Lake Winnembezaki.
Yeah, oh, yeah. I remember that.
From all across the country, you know? And, or, you know, and I usually send them back. I said, mind your own business? Yeah, I mean, you know, I mean, I don't interfere in your state, don't interfere in mine. I've even gotten stuff from France, you know, and, and, I mean, you know, which I usually don't even answer. But, yeah, if you have something concerning some legislation, rgbohm@comcast.net and specify that from Litchfield and subject, so I'll read it. Because like I said, we get a lot of, you know?
Thank you, folks.
Well, thank you very much.
Thank you. Like I said, I must come back and... Like I said, I must come back in June. So we can pass on what happened, what didn't happen, and what hurt.
They all have three on them?
Yep.
Could switch?
I shared it out with everyone.
It's kind of like the table, the way it looks. It's kind of like that.
Yeah. I'm not sure who's giving us some.
Got a few topics for you.
Tom, do you?
I hope so. Tomorrow, yeah, well, time drive. We'll give you guys down the moment, get settled here. In the meantime, we have no presentations or recognitions for this evening?
We do not.
And correspondence? No, that's, yeah.
I did get an email.
I think my computer has died. It's like, oh, boo.
It's a one sent to both of us.
It's all, it's sent to all of us.
Bill, the white thing is the remote.
It gave me this funny error message I've never seen. Says something about email, something.
Do you not have a, oh, your, no, your, my.
It is.
It's from Carrie Douglas.
Okay, oh, good.
No, you didn't get it. It's about, it's about the downshifting in, um, in state funding.
We'll chat at 10 minutes.
Yeah.
Plus or something there?
Yeah. Basically, it was, it's talking about in 1977, the state and the governor established a 35% state contribution to the, to the teacher retirement fund. And in 2009, that was reduced to 30%. And it, Mrs. Douglas says it's time to return to the initial promise, restoring that 35% contribution, which free up local tax dollars to fund capital improvement projects like school improvements and other needed investments, such as firearms.
I think the reps gave us the answer to that already.
Yeah, don't count on it?
Yeah. Which had once, doesn't necessarily mean you're going to get it again.
Right. What, what is the contribution now? Is it at 30% now? For retirement? Or did it just decrease again?
The state portion? It's not that high, it's been downshifting, because our portion's gone up.
Yeah.
I'm not sure what the state.
Okay. All right.
The state's portion?
What was that?
Oh, here it is.
You're just saying, you thought it was like 17.5.
Oh, down from 35%?
No, that's the, that's the employer.
Okay.
We can find that one.
But she makes a good, a good point that, you know, they established it at 35% and towns and districts bought in into that program.
They wanted a keynote, too.
Yep. I agree.
What you get today? SpongeBob numbers just bouncing around all over, this is rags and nuts. All right, yeah, so why don't you just submit that, and we'll get into the minutes. That'll bring us to superintendent's comments. Unless, I don't know whether correspondence, I don't think, either?
Nope, that wasn't. And you were CC'd on that, Michelle, so you should have a copy of that.
Who was that, though?
That was from Carrie Douglas.
So just a couple of quick follow-ups. So the, the NHSBA delegate assembly, so that is coming up on January 26th. And I'm not sure if anybody has volunteered to attend.
Are you going to go?
I can't do it.
You can't?
I wanted to.
I can go.
You can, because I can register.
Yeah. I can go.
Perfect. And just a reminder that we had submitted a little bit late, so it didn't make the official slate. But the, the resolution dealing with the manifest hardship cases. And I know, I had members of my own local board where I live who spoke to me about the fact they loved that we were putting this in, because they had also had a couple of manifest hardship cases that affected them in order to pay out. And so I think they're interested in seeing this be introduced from the floor.
Okay.
And their concept on it is that if the state board then approves that there is a manifest hardship, then they should pay for that. Instead of, it's very easy to approve something and point back at other people and say, now pay for it. So their concept is, so expect they may engage in a friendly amendment to somehow make this suggest that, you know, that's, that would be.
So we have a proposed resolution to be presented?
It's in, it's in the packet. It'll be there on the floor when you get there, but it'll, it says that, because it was submitted late, it's not.
Okay. I think I have that.
It's not included on the slate, but it can be introduced from the floor. And then see where it goes. All right?
Michelle, will you send me an email?
I will send you, what thing you want?
Big old fat one. Thank you.
And then the second topic is a reminder that the special ed conference, so Devin has the ability to have a board member join her for this special ed conference. And this runs from March 14th to the 15th. And so if somebody is interested in it, the, the topics are around trauma-sensitive schools, mental health needs, expanding options, building resilient communities, managing students with complex mental health needs again. So those are the types of topics, so.
I looked at that, and it looks like it's the same thing both days. Could I, could just, could I go just for one day?
I'm sure we could do that, or?
It's in Portsmouth, correct?
It is.
You just gave me a copy of it. I think it's in Portsmouth.
Why am I not seeing where it is?
Well, we can talk about it later. I could probably go to that.
Did you even ask, like, which day was, would be more beneficial?
And I think what they do is they kind of run the sessions against each other, so that you can, you can actually, even though the same topics are presented, you could attend two different topics in the same time slot.
Right.
So that way you could do. Perfect.
One day and one day, that'd be great.
Take a peek and then let us know.
That'd be great.
Yep.
I have a copy.
So the, the next topic is the warrant. And so basically, we have a draft warrant that is shared with you, if you click that link. And I'm going to ask Cory to jump in as needed to make sure that we understand what we need to do and what our deadlines are. But basically, this is the. This is the draft warrant. And we've got a little bit of time, time is on our side. So what we were thinking is that we probably all plan to attend the budget hearing tomorrow. So that'll give us some more feedback on where people's thinking is on this. And then we would be able to check the language with DRA to make sure that we've got the language correct. So that coming into the January 23rd meeting, we could have final language. And, you know, if there are board members who, after the budget hearing, feel like, oh, you know, maybe that's not the right thing, you know, we can, we can sort of tweak and adjust it and have a final version ready to, ready to sign on the 23rd. We need to have it posted by January 28th. So it just gives us a little bit more time. But I'm, I'm curious if there are things in here that folks want to react to or give us feedback on now.
I guess the first one's on Article 1. We don't have a bus contract as of yet, correct?
Yeah, that's correct. I think at this point, we're probably looking at making that, any adjustment would be at deliberative. And I foresee that, that adjustment would be down. We budgeted for a 5% increase, so probably in the three to three and a half range.
So is the budget committee tomorrow going to make that clear, that our budget is still fluid at this point? As far as the difference between that and the default?
I can catch up with Cindy before the, before the hearing.
I'll just, I, I, just think it would be important, just to put it out there on, on the floor, that, you know, we're still waiting for some information. It's not finalized yet.
Yeah.
Article 2 is our collective bargaining article. And those numbers have been, I guess, flushed out and sat at this point.
Right.
So can I just clear, the estimated tax impact amounts that we're seeing are only those in additional rev, oh, actually, I'm kind of back on Article 1, I'm just trying to understand. So the 46 cents represents any potential increase from last year.
Yeah, that's correct.
What, decrease in funding? Increase and decrease in funding? Combination of both?
With, with the majority of it coming from the decrease in funding side, you said that was how mu?
Right.
Thirty?
So the warrant is, it sits right now, and there does have to be a revision tomorrow. I did find in the sheet that I used to calculate the tax rate, there was a portion of the revenue that wasn't included. So the, the tax rate impacts are going to adjust, the estimated for the operating budget's going to be 36 cents. The default budget is going to be 34. I'm sorry, no.
But the driver for that is the loss of revenue for the most part, because the budget's not up that much.
The budget's only up a little bit less than 1%. So the, the main driver is the, the change in revenue.
Well, so with one?
I moved this to two accidentally. I thought we were.
We'll check with Tara and make sure we're ready to go to three. So Article 2. Is that the way it's always been worded, where it, it lists the years and dollars, but then it only says they're appropriate funds for one year?
Because you are, you are only appropriate.
But then the following year, you, it's not.
It's on the budget.
Because you've sanbornized it by notifying people that that's what it will cost in year two. You can actually, if I, if I'm right, you then can budget just based on current projections. Because remember, these are well over a year out, so we can be closer. So will it really cost 374 in year two? If, for whatever reason, things happen in the meantime, and that decreases to 350, we would budget 350.
Just to piggyback onto Brian, when I first read that, it almost looked like you're doubling up to 394, is that what you were saying? The way it was worded?
No.
I, I know it's not, but I just, I worry a little bit somebody might confuse that thing, those three plus enough, 394.
Been that way ever since I can remember.
And that's the language DRA makes you use, so.
Bill, so with two? Article 3?
So 3 is the enrichment tutor article. And one question I had, and I don't know if it matters to the board, so 3 and 4 kind of go hand in hand. 3 is the enrichment tutor, so that would be the tutor providing services for students, kind of to enhance the curriculum at the middle school. Whereas 4 is the math tutor position, and this would be more drilling into students who are struggling with mathematics and making sure that they're getting what they need to succeed. You know, does, should one be voted on first, or does it not matter, would be my question? I mean, in this case, it's, it's an enrichment tutor, the first thing the voter would encounter, and then a support math tutor for struggling or resistant learners is the second one. We could reverse the numbers or leave it as is?
I defer to you.
I like it the way it is.
Yeah, I'm deferring to the board, because I, I don't know the town piece of it.
I, I don't think it really matters.
I think, I think voters will support both. You know, I think both are very necessary, and I, I don't, I don't anticipate having a, a mountain to climb on those.
Article 5. Are we done with four?
So three.
On four?
Nope, 3 and 4, I think we hit.
Yep.
Um, 5 then is the, this is the teacher hiring expendable trust. We've received a lot of feedback and thoughts on this, and I don't know if the board, and the board has voted to recommend it, 500. But I think the board just has to decide, is this the right idea, is this, do we want to stay the course with this, or?
Do you want to share the feedback that you?
Well, I think the budget committee has really questioned the necessity of this. And they, they are saying that we've already demonstrated the ability within the budget to.
That we did it this year, that we can do it again, that's.
Yep. And so with that feedback, do we want to have this as a concept that we're?
But they also said that if you put it into the Building 8 warrant, they would support that.
Which is Article 6, so.
Put it into that, you, how do you mean?
I believe it was, it was Carrie who said that she would rather see the.
75?
Was it Cindy?
Yeah.
So Cindy said she'd rather see that dollar amount placed into Article 6 for building purposes.
In addition to the.
But then that couldn't be used for any teacher needs, is that?
That's correct, and it wouldn't be used for teacher needs.
Right, but her argument was that, so I'll give you a couple of examples. We had the, the roadway at LMS that cost us about $35,000 roughly to repair. That was an unforeseen expense. Just so the board is aware, there's also a heating and ventilation issue at LMS that we're trying to address. And, you know, early estimates on that are $25,000.
This is our year.
Is it in the building?
It likes.
One of the portables.
No, it's.
How's the office?
It's in the center, it's in the center court, which covers guidance and special ed.
The study, was that all on the H.L. Turner study already?
Yes.
The controls was a part of it, yeah.
But we're, we're at the point where we're just generating too much heat and sweating people out of their space.
Oh, in middle school.
Although Tom is now going to start a hot yoga class any day, so.
Welcome to my world.
Like, like Cindy was in her discussion with the tutor, I mean, what happened to us this year as far as first grades, an anomaly. I mean, I'm not certain of it, she thinks it may have happened one other time, if I'm not mistaken. Let's hope it doesn't, because it's not easy, like, turning around, like, looking like, where can we find $90,000 or $100,000 for a teacher?
Right, it's not easy.
I mean, it's a right, it's a right thing to do, it was a right thing to do, but you can't find it every year, where the budget committee keeps cutting in different areas. But they're telling us, you know, ahead of time, that they would support 6 at a higher remote, which I don't think they'll support 5.
And, and I guess conceptually, if, I mean, we're currently trying to, within our maintenance budget, find the money to support the two. But we're talking a $50,000 finding, right? Which is sort of a teaching position. So if, if, you know, if we were instead saying, okay, we've got to buckle down and find this teaching position, because we've got $125,000 or more in a trust fund, so we don't have to worry about the maintenance side of it. So I think she's just saying, you know, if the buildings are the most pressing thing, save for that, it'll free up your ability to work within your budget to scrape together various lines and.
Especially where our buildings are aging.
Yeah, absolutely. And, and like you said, we've already had need this year.
And again, it's coming from outside, outside financials.
The $5,000 only brings us back to where we were at last year, right?
Right.
The expenses that we've had unanticipated.
That kind of makes up for what we've done.
Right, it doesn't get us.
Ahead.
The tax impact on 6 is zero.
Do we have a number to offer to voters? Like, this is our goal, this is our target amount to have in that?
They did ask, didn't they? Somebody asked how much they have voters.
I think that's, as a voter, I would like to see that. I'd like to see, you know, can we have another $50,000? Because our goal is to have 200,000 or whatever the number is.
It's hard to say what the appropriate number is, I mean, you can.
Yeah.
I mean, you lose a roof, you lose a roof. What's a roof go for?
Millions. Yeah. At least a million, probably, 750 to a million.
Depends on what losing a roof means, too.
True. That's true.
When I'm saying millions.
I guess we're not in the area, I guess we're not in the area of the country we have to worry about losing the whole roof. I guess we're not in the area, I guess we're not in the area of the country we have to worry about losing the whole roof.
My 17,000.
Even losing a, yeah, losing a boiler.
Yeah.
I mean, those things are, they're extremely costly, so what's the right number? You throw it around the board, I'd say half a million.
I just got a little heartburn.
You okay now?
It's a little reserve fund. It would cost probably less than a wheel for a fire truck.
So we don't have a reserve fund?
We do.
How much is in that?
184.
184? So we want half a million.
I just threw that number out there. I don't know what the right number is.
This will get us closer to like 250.
That minus a 35 for the sinkhole?
We didn't draw from that at this point.
Yeah.
I like calling it the sinkhole. You call it the driveway.
If we do the two projects, you could look at it that the 50,000 sort of replenishes what those two were, if they come out of there. If we're able to do that within the existing budget, then that's kind of setting aside an additional 50. If you take the 75 up above and add that to Article six, so eliminate five and make the number 125.
Or do you make a 100 this year?
That'll be 300,000.
Or 100, yeah? That's another strategy.
Are we gonna, well, I think if the Budget Committee is supportive of that, I would be as well, because I think, given that rationale, it does.
Make perfect sense.
Yeah.
So do you think we should add the 75 to the 50, or should we just do 100, do 125?
I'd say we add 100. I mean.
Make it 100.
Make it 100.
And get rid of Article five.
They're not gonna support it.
Yeah.
And I think, to be honest with you, as much as I think there's a need to have that there, in case it happens again, that let's hope it doesn't happen again and our projections are correct. It, it, it doesn't happen that often. I think there's more often we have problems with our buildings than we do less than short a teacher.
I don't know, nine new kids, but since December, it makes me nervous.
Yeah, I know.
And the enrollment.
Yeah, we'll make a motion to.
GMS had nine more kids.
Five.
Yeah, I can do that. So I'd like to make a motion to remove Article five.
A second?
Eliminate Article five.
Further discussion? Hearing none, all is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Make the motion to increase, or do I have to remove Article six?
Nope, just increase it.
Make a motion to increase Article six to 100,000?
Yeah, from 50 to 100. Is there a second?
It's like a minute.
Further discussion? Hearing none, all is in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye.
And then the last piece, um, attached, I think it's in your packet, right? There, there was a petition warrant article that I would just encourage the board to read, so that you're aware that there has been a petition from the community.
Can you just, can you just explain that? Is it 25 signatures and then it has to be?
Yep, so they, um, they need 25 signatures to have it placed on the, on the warrant, and if you look at it, there's one piece of paper that has 22 signatures. The check marks in the margin verify that they were valid legitimate voters. There's a second piece of paper with eight, so they've exceeded the 25 threshold, so there is a petition warrant.
This will go on the school ballot?
It'll be on the school ballot. That's where they petitioned, yep. So next up, everybody's ready, I'm gonna move on to the default budget piece, and again, Corey's gonna walk through the calculations on where he is, where I think we sort of addressed it, but I just want to make sure that it's cleared to everybody.
For the default budget, um, in terms of calculation, what we did is we took where everybody stood, salaries and benefits wise, as of October, whenever it was we were generating, um, this. We pulled it in to go ahead, because those are all considered contractual obligations. So those are the amounts we would be expected to pay if we had the same staffing level as of July 1st. Then, uh, review of certain contracts, there's not many, the one big thing outstanding right now is the transportation contract, so transportation, you can't, if you don't have a contract in place, you can't add a percentage, so that is level funded dollar for dollar into the default budget. Other than that, um, a majority of the, the supply lines and other lines operations wise are completely level funded going into that default budget. I don't anticipate any changes to that default. We have up till the, what was it, the date of when we print the ballot, right? Or when, when is the final adjustment for?
The default budget has to be posted, the warrant's posted.
Okay.
So the 28th?
So I don't anticipate any change before then. There is the possibility, if, um, when we do get the transportation contract in, that our proposed could potentially fall below the default. Because they're anticipating a lower increase in transportation than what was initially budgeted for.
Happened a few years ago, too.
What's that?
It happened a few years ago, too.
The last year, the, the default was happening last year.
Was it last year?
Yeah.
All right. Anybody have any other questions on the default budget? So we have an enrollment update?
Yes, so, uh, it's a two-sided sheet, I think. I didn't look at it online. I'm gonna do that to make sure that, I have a paper copy here. So the first side that comes up is the most current. It gives you the January enrollment update. And you can see that we've given you the previously presented numbers, so September, October, November, December, then read into January. So, uh, I think the pieces that jump out, um, from December into January, uh, you can see that GMS has gone from 466 to 471. The biggest impact really was the kindergarten. It jumped from 83 to 86, so half of the students roughly were there. Um, LMS went from 401 to 403, so it's a little bit more stable. I don't know why my screen just dimmed. And finally, the high school has stayed steady at 440. So from the beginning of the year, uh, the high schools had the most stable enrollment. They stayed right around 439, added one student up to 440. And I think the, the piece that we're feeling the tightest really are the kindergarten classrooms. Again, we had solid projections that we were gonna be, um, in the 60s for those classrooms, and we're now at 86, and so, uh, it's been kind of a moving target for us, and, uh, you can imagine when you have 21 or 22, um, kindergarteners in, in those rooms, that it's, that it's tight and it's active and it's energetic. But we are dealing with it, and the staff have actually responded pretty favorably to the situation they've been dealt.
I was just gonna ask Scott, let me, I'm sure you get feedback from the kindergarten teachers.
I actually met with them about class size in December, um, because, you know, the question comes up with parents, too, how are we dealing with this? But, um, I think there's a very logical progression that, uh, at least to me, makes sense. In our preschool, the class size is limited to 15 students, and by design in, um, our charter, up to 50% of those students can be students with disabilities. For that group, there's one teacher and one para. In kindergarten, we, our current policy is up to 20 with a para, and there's many fewer students who have disabilities, because we don't do 50/50. And then by grade one, we anticipate that the students can walk independently, you know, while in centers, that kind of thing. So I think there's a very logical three-year progression there. Um, so the kindergarten teachers, while they do, um, share that having to add extra hooks to the wall is not what we had in mind, because we have 20, and, you know, the other thing, accommodations they need to make. It is a challenge, but, um, they feel that having the pares, and they're okay with having the students walk some of the time independently while they're doing small group kind of instruction. So I think we're managing it.
I have a question.
Yeah.
How many kids are in the process of getting IEPs in kindergarten yet? Have any been identified?
Um, I sit for those meetings, and we don't have a, a whole lot.
Not yet?
No.
I'm just curious. I know some will come in from the preschool.
Yeah. No, I mean, it, it happens. We certainly have more students referred in the, you know, primary grades, because you begin to see that there's difficulty, but we haven't had a whole lot in kindergarten, and it's January, so.
Those teachers are all rock stars.
They are, yeah.
They're exhausted. I'm telling you right now, they are exhausted, and being in their classrooms until 3:15 every day is exhausting for them.
Yeah.
And having one-on, they are in their room watching their children until 3:15, until the last kid gets on that bus. I feel for them.
They do a great job.
I think we all do.
I think rock stars is a great description.
Yeah, you can tell, you can tell them I said that.
So can we get a little banner where it used to say, welcome?
Yeah, rock stars only.
Rock stars only, there you go.
Anything else on the enrollment side of it?
No, I just noticed that the middle school's the only one that's not carrying your weights since September.
Too long there.
No, we went.
Fun down.
We went up for this report, though, didn't we, for Jada? We dropped and now we're back up.
September, you had 404.
I, I think we're, what?
September, you were at 404.
I think we actually, um.
They're dropping because of the heat.
But they gained two.
I think we gained another one.
Scott and Nick Rüssberger times four.
I'll work on that, Brian, this month, okay?
Maybe Scott can move one of those kindergartners up to you.
I think we're up to 404, actually, even since this report.
You can double check that.
So, uh, the, the next topic is on the recycling here at the high school, and I'm glad that Bill's with us. Um, but basically, we've done one of the lunch rounds. So two board members have attended lunch. We've got the other lunch round scheduled, so all the board members will be able to experience the food service program here and some of the enhancements that Lauren has made, so I, I appreciate the board members are willing to come in and to do that. And it was noted on one of them that, um, even though we have an award-winning recycling program with a lot of really awesome things happening, the cafeteria sort of stood out as, wait a second, kids are just throwing away a lot of recyclable material in here. And so I had approached Bill about it, and I want to make sure I've got it right, and then ask you to jump in, but, um, the basic gist of it comes down to the fact that it's largely a, a student volunteer-driven recycling program. And so the ability for that bucket to sit in the corner of this room and do it, accumulate paper and an occasional can or bottle over a week until students can come and sort and pick that up is pretty, um, pretty doable when you have a student-driven initiative like that. Lunch would be far more intense, and it would be, uh, really difficult to keep up with the volume that would be generated on a student initiative piece. So that's a, that's a challenge that we have. It doesn't mean it's not something we can't confront, but that's the challenge that we have, so.
So the class is a last block class, meets Monday last block, Wednesday last block, and Friday last block. You have lunch five days a week, and you have lunch prior to that, but when, when you look at what the kids are doing, one, and managing what happens here, doing the cafeteria becomes somewhat more challenging, because you have two days a week, you can't get in there. Okay, which means you have trash and bottles and everything combined. We could set up certainly recycling, um, specific recycling units for plastic, that all the plastic just goes in there, but you've got milk bottles, you've got things that are going to smell after a day, and you've got the sort of bacteria concerns and flies and. So that's the real challenge. They've done a great job with paper, which right now is really difficult to, to deal with. Terrific job with cardboard and, and a really good job with plastics and metals and those things, but they, it's, they can't support the cafeteria staff, which is really what it comes down to for those daily jobs that you have to do between those three lunch periods and manage that piece. If it were simply water bottles, we, we could, we could manage water bottles, but if you're talking about juice and milk and some of those other things, you have a day off between those. And then managing those on Fridays, Fridays is the day when all the real serious gathering and, and collecting goes. To do that on Fridays would take two classes of students.
I think you just did plastic bottles. There were quite a few plastic bottles that day. You know, so, you know, you could just do a barrel. I mean, LMS does it, in fact, they have one in the gym. You know, it's just a barrel with like a smaller hose, it's recycling, and that's where it goes in. Cans and, and plastic. And my other thought was, as you were talking, like, you know, it's kind of time consuming, people can't get in there. Can you utilize the kids that are in the store? There seems to be a, a lot of kids in the store, and I, I'm gonna say, because, I mean, it's part of business. Part of business is everything from, you know, from groundskeeping to maintenance, to running a register, to selling. I mean, it's part of business.
I, we, we could. I think, um, it's a course. We'd have to incorporate the recycling piece into the course and make a piece of that course, so there'd definitely be some curriculum changes.
I mean, the day, yeah, the day we were there for lunch, like I said, there were like a handful of individuals at that store, and.
Absolutely.
It wasn't exactly rocking and sales.
No, um, no, it's not as if they're selling three to four t-shirts and sweatshirts on a weekly basis. You know, there are key times when they're very busy with those things. Absolutely. Yeah. It's something we can take a look at.
You know, just incorporate like another part of, of running a business.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Tom, how do you, is it, is it Green Raiders at LMS that, that do the, the plastic recycling?
Yes, they, they oversee the whole thing. Jill Deloria's the advisor, and, um, you know, she does a great job. We have a volunteer who works closely with her, and does, uh, does a number of things, paper, cardboard, bottles, so.
And do you have the same paper recycle, like, I saw, there was a, a Facebook post about the paper recycling.
Overflowing.
Is that?
It's overflowing.
That's district wide?
Actually, we just found out, Jill just told me the other day, that they're going out of business, paper retriever. So she, uh, reached out to her network. There's actually a recycling network of, of folks that are involved in the schools in the state, and they have Plan B, C, and D lined up, so she's exploring.
What's that?
That's district wide?
Yep. I, yeah, is there one at each school?
Well, I'm gonna have to check, because there was a halt of paper recycling, as I understood it, and so I'll have to talk with Mrs. Robinson, who works for the Green Team, and see where we stand with that, because I thought it had to do with the town not doing.
No, it's, it's paper retriever. They basically went out of business and stopped emptying dumpsters, and I don't believe they notified.
Okay.
Not as lucrative a business as they, I guess, but we, so there, there are some options. I don't know what they are exactly right now, but she's been having conversations with other, other schools, similar programs and what they use.
Okay.
So.
Since, since we brought that up, because I know I've mentioned this before, and I noticed that I was gonna say something today, because I was at LMS, and there's that thing, right, like, you know, in the parking lot, where a little while back, it was kind of like the back of the, the school. Can we, like, get that back?
Is that the, the?
The book, the dump? There's two of them.
Oh, the green thing, the, yeah, it's another dumpster looking thing.
Oh, it's still better than GMS.
I, I'm sure we can find another home at GMS, too, but, I mean, if, if we can move those to the back of the building, and I, I don't know if you guys have made it back over here.
Us?
Yeah, it's still there.
We brought, we brought them out. I believe that we brought them out. Oh, maybe he's not here. Um, we did a clothing drive back during homecoming.
Yeah.
I'm not sure if they brought the, the container over, they just had a truck.
They had a truck. They had a lot better.
The containers over there, though, and then you have the aluminum.
Over in the corner here.
The only reason I remember when they put those down is that, I mean, we're already at a dead end. They wanted them in a line of sight that was a little more visible than the back, because then they're afraid people are just gonna dump other things in those dumpsters, so they wanted it a little more visible in the front, so we can investigate it.
Do you have any idea how profitable those things are? I'm just curious, how profitable?
I, I don't know. I, I can.
We make, we're, we're supposed to bring in, we bring in a percentage or something from that, right?
Gets $50 a month for the big clothing events out there. PTO, PTO is the one that sponsored that.
But they got a ton of money for those two fine r- razors.
They did. I think it was $1,500, $2,000. It was a large.
I'm just wondering, like, the paper ones, if, if there's any monies being made on those. It's just.
Market's really bad on paper.
It's small, yes.
That's the concern for us.
What's that, like, what's the other one? Cardboard or books? I don't know what the, I can't remember what the other one is at your school.
It's books. It's not cardboard. It's books, I believe. I can find out more information from Jill.
I wish I had known that before I moved.
It's just, it'd be nice if we could get out of the parking lot, that's all, just, I mean, just as far as visual.
Yep.
And I'm not sure if there's another spot, same at the high school, I don't know if there's a better spot, you know, out of the way, but, I mean, we did a nice job, like, cleaning up the corner over here, and, you know, now all of a sudden, those things are there, and if I'm not mistaken, there's like a trailer with tin cans in it in front of it right now.
Probably, probably, yeah.
Yeah.
And we said that in the back of the school.
The facilities team, see what they can, see what they can do.
That, that if it comes down to it, we have to do it, especially, like, in your case, you can do it, piece of fencing.
Oh, right, yeah, just a decorative piece of fencing around it, you're all set, absolutely.
Something to clean it up, that's all.
Yeah.
I mean, done it, like I said, especially this corner over here. I mean, done it, like I said, especially this corner over here, getting rid of those storage containers and cleaning the thing up, getting rid of...
They cleaned it up some, there's like crushed rocks. I think it looks good.
But if you look at it right now, they get that trailer with tin cans all over the place and like, and those bins of clothes and paper and...
I still think GMS is the worst. No offense, it's not your fault. Like, it's the only place they can get to the trash, is right in front of the school.
Accessible from the highway.
But the same thing, maybe we...
Put a stockade fence up there.
Exactly. You know, a couple pieces of stockade fence, even if you could do it, just to clean it up.
It matches with the propane tank in the front of the school. It looks really pretty.
Put a tiger on it.
I want my propane tank if they ever move it.
All right, make it a tiger's.
That's a great idea.
Paint the tank.
A tiger.
Tiger stripes.
That wouldn't stand out.
All right, last, the last piece, I just want to inform the board that there was an article in yesterday's Union Leader. And basically, the state has been sitting on about 10,000, or, I'm sorry, $10 million in federal funds that they've not been able to spend. And if you read the article at some point, there's sort of a point from the state to school districts saying, you know, you complain all the time that you don't have enough money, and yet, here's $10 million in federal funds that didn't get spent by school districts. And then it ended up, I guess, for 10 years or so, it's been accumulating in a fund. The state's just been parking the unspent money, and it's been growing and growing and growing. So, there was then linked to it a chart that showed how much each school district in the state didn't spend. And it was a little bit misleading if you read the chart. So, I just want to make sure the board is clear on this because I know we've had one board member already contacted by somebody in the community. I still don't know how they interpreted from the chart that we didn't spend $50,000. And so, what I provided you is an actual spreadsheet showing how much money, going back to 2009, how much money the Litchfield School District was allocated, how much we budgeted, how much was approved. You'll notice that in each case, it's identical. And then, how much was paid back to us. And paid means the state gave us that money in reimbursement, so therefore, what our balance was. And you can see that we spent every single penny. Devin really kind of came in, she called me right away, and she never calls me first thing in the morning, and she said, "We spend all our money. This article annoys me." So, I just want you to understand that we are managing those funds very, very closely. And if you look, the 2017-18 grant, so that was last year's federal grant, we still have a balance of $13,966.10. However, it's a 27-month grant. So, it started on July 1st of 2017. We have until September 30th of 2019, the end of next September, to spend the $13,000. We will do that. We will do that. You can see, we're already spending into our almost $300,000 that's been allocated this year, but we will certainly make sure that we incorporate the money that is left over.
The chart that's in the article is 2016 and 17.
Right.
And so, I think maybe where the confusion was in terms of reading it, it was me that had a neighbor contact me about this. And, um...
What?
Yes.
Miss, get a handle on your neighbors.
That must be her end of the street. We're the quiet end of the street.
You know, I'm glad to, you know, have the information. So, the negatives are those districts that haven't spent their money.
Right, that's money they left in the pot.
Right. So, there are some that are positive, which maybe we submitted more, I think ours was, what, 3,000 more?
So, it showed that we spent 3,000 more than we were allocated.
But they don't give us extra.
I think there's a typo in it, personally. I think, however that was created, there could have been a typo. Because you can look at our 1617 number, and we spent $339,299.33, all the money that was allocated.
If they were picking up the balance as of June 30th, that could have been carryover because, as he said, it's a 27-month grant. You carry that over, just like that, that 13,000 sitting there right now, it's carryover money. We will spend it.
All right, so, this is good information. So, we've spent all of the money and will continue to.
Yes, and Devin watches it very, very closely. And if you look at the IDEA preschool side, you can see those $15.55. We will spend that, too. So, you have nothing to worry about on this.
Can they go back and get this money? Because the person in Keene left all that money there?
Well, this is accumulated over, well, the 10 million is over many years.
And basically, the commissioner is trying to free that money up, so there would be some sort of supplemental allocation. So, if we receive a supplemental allocation from the 10 million, our portion of that would get added into probably a future grant or a separate additional grant, supplemental grant, and we will spend all of that money. So, I can guarantee you, whatever comes to Litchfield will get spent. So, if you hear from a neighbor, assure them that we are right on top of it.
Good to know. Thank you for getting that information so quickly.
You are welcome. We were working on it because I was anticipating it. Your email came in, and I'm like, yes, good, we saw it coming.
Do you have anything else? That brings us to school board comments. Liz, any comments?
About what?
Tara?
Well, apparently, I don't make bacon like the middle school. That's all I have to say. I cook it too much. My boys prefer it, yeah.
Wait, you had bacon at the middle school?
Yeah, I was thinking...
And I was not alerted?
When was there bacon?
I don't know, but they said, you know, they're Scott's...
I don't remember what day it was, but...
I don't know, but Scott said, "Can you cook it like the middle school? They don't make, they don't cook it so much."
Yeah, they're competing with McGill's down in DC, one of the infamous bacon stops down there, so.
Does anybody have anything? That brings us to, we have minutes from December 19th for approval.
Can I go back one second? Now, I have a comment or a question. I would like to know, can this be about, I'm trying to decide, is there any way, and I don't know whether I should put this in motion form, we can bypass naming the auditorium after Phil because the proposition was brought forth before we had a policy? Don't give me that one. What?
He said we still have a policy at this point.
So, why can't we approve, I put forth a motion to name it after Phil now? May I? Can I?
You can, go ahead.
But do you understand what I'm saying?
Are you making a motion?
Yes, I'm making a motion. Because I don't understand why we have to...
Is there a second?
A second, so Liz can continue her discussion.
This was brought forth before we had a policy, and we've already talked about the policy and talked about the policy, and we're gonna have a wonderful policy, I know we will. But we brought this for, every week, if the two people in the audience were still here, they would have brought it up again. And I want to know if there's any way we could do it, not as an exception, but because it was brought forth before we started talking about a policy.
But there were a couple others that came up before that, too. And we notified them that we don't name anything. And then, when the third one came up, that I'm aware of, that's when we decided, okay, listen, we need a policy to cover this.
But we still didn't have a policy.
No, that's why we're working on a policy. And I think we all were in agreement when we talked about that there should be a period of time, as far as letting the emotional part come out of it, and...
Okay. But by the time we have a policy, the emotions will be on.
Okay, and then you can vote, and then it can be voted on, as far as...
But then we're gonna have to bring it to the voters, and we're gonna have to put it...
Because that's what we said the policy would be.
And in the absence of a policy, the, what we were leaning on in the past was precedence. And our precedence was, we weren't naming anything after anybody.
True. I just wanted to know if there was any chance we could bypass the whole policy. I just thought I'd throw it out there because there has been a lot of community interest. A lot of parents have contacted me, students have contacted me. Everywhere I go and every school now, the gymnasium in Hudson is named after somebody. I didn't know that, and now I know because I saw it up there. I'm looking everywhere now. So, I just thought I'd throw it out there.
We just felt that as a board, I mean, that's a discussion we all had, is that if it's something that's, you know, supposedly forever, then it should have importance and it should...
That's why I think we should do it now.
Yeah, but that's why...
It'll stand the test of time.
I also think that that's what the public should have input on it also, as far as a vote on it.
But no one...
And I appreciate the fact that they come in and want to support Mr. Martin in naming it that. But I just think that going through the process and going through and developing a policy so that future boards, and I realize they can change a policy as time goes on, but I think just so future boards have something that they can utilize to give them direction to do so.
Oh, I understand that.
I mean, they can put a banner up. If you go to the middle school, there's a banner up for Bliss. I'm not even certain who the person is.
Jim Bliss.
Yeah, but I know he was there for quite some time as, was he the phys ed teacher?
He was athletic director, athletic coordinator.
Yeah, and there's a banner there.
I absolutely see where you're coming from.
Yeah, I just was sending those, you know.
I agree that we should have the vote, for sure. Kind of the next step would be, see, I kind of see it as, they've already gone through most of the process. They brought it forward, they spoke to Bill about it, right? Okay, didn't they? And then, and then they went to the superintendent, and the superintendent brought it to the board. So, I feel like that part of the vetting process has already been completed. I don't feel like they need to do all of that again, once we approve the policy.
And then, we're gonna have to wait another year.
That's, that's kind of where I'm leaning now.
That's...
It's not too late, right now.
And I'll ask a question that I asked the audience several times. What are you losing by waiting? And if the students are so concerned that everyone's gonna forget Phil Martin, then maybe we shouldn't name it after Phil Martin. And I don't think that's the case, because I think there's still a lot of alumni that know him, that respected him for what he's done. I think there's current students who feel the same way. So, going through the waiting process, if that's how we're gonna establish the policy, I think there's a need for it to make certain that it's the right choice. And then, once the process...
2021.
Not sure what the timeframe would be.
Nope, that's what it would be.
That's what it'll be.
Let me ask this. If we approve, oh, it's only the second read. Do we read it three times and then approve the policy?
No, the second reading would be the final approval.
So, this would be, if it gets approved tonight, could we potentially, I know we're talking about this motion, but if it gets approved tonight, could we potentially make the motion that it goes over warrant article for this year?
Take one warrant article for this year.
Why not?
You already passed the date for warrant articles.
We didn't.
We are.
We just eliminated a warrant article.
But in order to, I'm not mistaken, to bring one forward, correct? And I don't think we're ready to...
The policy, the policy also said it had to have public...
That's a public comment.
We can't just, the policy says...
So, we're going from a policy that would be like two and a half years to a policy that would be six months?
Just for this person?
I don't, I don't think it's right.
Okay, that's your opinion.
I know, it's my opinion.
That's what you'd say to me, because I have a lot of opinions.
And I guess I'm somewhere in between, you know? I feel like, because they did approach us before the policy, maybe in this case...
So, do we go back into all the other people who approached, one being named? Do we just start naming everything under, after them?
That only came up once for those other two.
It's come up more than once.
Three, I think this is the third time.
Third, that I know of, at least a third, and I guarantee there's more.
The other one was the press box for Continental and Dr. Engie.
But that's not an issue anymore.
Another one was the baseball field.
Well, I was here.
Just a couple years ago.
Well, if they want to come forward and pursue that process and go through the policy process again, I think then...
We'll have a policy by then.
They are welcome to do that.
I would just say, if we're...
Won't we have a policy by then?
Just personally, you know, it's me voting on a policy, and the first thing you do is override it.
This would be the policy.
So, this is the second read tonight on naming. And so, if the board accepts the policy as written, we made those minor adjustments just for clarity, you then have a policy and can take that further from there.
So, we currently don't have a policy.
Which was a lot of the parents who came...
Well, if I were to make a motion to put, to add a warrant article, to name the auditorium after Phil on this year's ballot, would I hypothetically get a second?
Yes, you would.
Well, you can have Liz then her...
You're doing that as a board member or as a citizen?
You have to go sit over there.
If you do it as a citizen, petition articles, deadline is over.
Yeah, no, I would be doing it as a school board member, as an, as...
Well, we have a motion and a second already on the floor.
I would like to change my motion to, to, help me, Tina. I propose that we want to add, submit a warrant article in the name of naming the auditorium at Campbell High School, Phil Martin Auditorium as a warrant article in the 2019 ballot. In anticipation of the new policy, which will be enacted tonight.
I'll second.
Motion and a second. Is there any further discussion?
I think, I do agree to that because there, I feel like there has been a lot of public support already. It's been brought up so many times already, so I feel like they've vetted that.
I understand they did, but keep in mind, it's the emotional part that they're doing, all right? And we talked about a policy, you're going against, there's no sense in even having And we talked about a policy, you're going against, there's no sense in even having the policy then, if just the route we're gonna be going. Because you wanted a policy, and we all established that a timeframe would be good, that, you know, go through the process, that we want to make certain we're doing the right thing, we want to make sure that, you know, this is what we want to do. That's why we're developing a policy. I just want to jump past it, and if that's the case, I think we should go back to all past records, of everyone wanting to have everything named after them, and we just have them named after them.
But they haven't been through the vetting process.
Who hasn't been through the vetting process?
Because they've waited two years, I know.
Say that again?
I said, actually, they can argue they've waited two years already.
Yeah.
I mean, I guess you could argue...
They're welcome to come back.
You're gonna open a Pandora's Box.
That's the thing, they can come back and go through the approval process, and, you know, have it...
They can, but I can also make a motion just to approve it now. I just, I think it's important, I mean, we work on that policy now for several meetings. We all seem to be in agreement with the policy.
I wasn't in agreement with the waiting period. I, for some reason, I wasn't processing putting it on next year's March ballot, because to me, that just pushes it out even further. Next year's ballot, 2020.
He stopped working for the district in June of 2016, 17.
Seventeen.
Okay. So this June, it will be two years.
Nobody was looking to name it after him, after he retired. Just saying. Am I wrong? He retired, he went on his way, and nobody came to us and said, "We want to name it after him."
Because he was still working here, he was coming back for Ben.
No, he wasn't working here. He wasn't working here.
He was still assisting with Ben. He was assisting with Ben. He did come back and help with that.
He helped with a few concerts, too.
There were some events that occurred, then he came back and gave some assistance.
Right, he wasn't a paid employee.
No.
No. So what I'm saying is, he retired, and didn't come knocking the doors down for it. Everybody's semi-piece, and we have a first, we have a second. Anybody else have anything else to say? How's in favor of naming the auditorium?
No. Adding a warrant article.
Oh, I'm sorry, adding a warrant article, which would be Article Six.
It may not pass.
Right, it puts it in the hands of the voters.
Shall the Litchfield School District vote to name the auditorium at CHS, the Philip Martin Auditorium, with the name being?
A permanent memorial.
How's the favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
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 How's against? Aye. The motion passes, three, two.
Is that proper wording?
I did my best. We're gonna double check the wording.
I think I know about the wording.
And I think they wanted a middle initial in there, so, K, is it? I couldn't remember.
It, I just feel really bad, the fact we're not going through the process.
We are going through the process.
We're not going through the process. We talked about developing a policy, we developed the policy, yet we want to make an exception for one person. Because people came, and people come for all different reasons, okay? But putting that aside, and emotions aside, and we're still dealing with the emotional part, that we have a policy, we're ready to go, so maybe we should even have the policy.
Well, that's what I think it comes down to, is they're obviously emotional, but the numbers are no different than they were for Dr. Engie a year ago. It's just the same people coming each time, you know, and they decided to go in a different direction. That's my concern of it, you know, the emotions aren't, are there, obviously, and people care.
So, let's go back, we got public minutes from December 19, 2018. Is there a motion?
I'm gonna motion to approve the minutes.
Second.
Nineteen.
Any discussion? Hearing that, all's in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Upstayed. So, that'll bring us to reports. And first off, it's curriculum.
Okay. Just to highlight a couple of things on the curriculum report that you guys have, one of you, I want to talk a little bit about Bill Atwood. We did bring Bill Atwood into GMS at the beginning of December. Having taken part in a lot of that day, it was super positive, the energy in the room was fantastic, and the teachers really seemed to be re-energized with math instruction through some of his work. And I know Scott's gonna talk a little bit more about it, so I'm gonna leave that there. But also, just to kind of update the board, that we have met, I met with a group of teacher representatives from both the middle school and the high school, and we are working with Bill to get a day, a day to kick off our work in these two levels with him. And we've spent some time talking about what they would hope to get out of having him come in as a math coach. So the other thing that I wanted to highlight was, we are coming up on New Hampshire Assessment Time, it's coming up very quickly. All the schools have put out their parent notification letters, those are, have not only gone home, but are posted on all of the websites. But I just wanted to make a note, so that the board understands, the state does have the, has passed the opt-out option. We run into the issue of, there is still the mandated 95% reporting for the district. So, we've had a lot of conversations around how to handle that, as parents do, if parents do start to come forward. And we just need to make sure that you guys are aware, and that the public's aware, that if our participation drops below that 95%, we are basically averaged in for students that did not take the test. So, we need to be very cognizant of that, as people are asking questions and things of that nature, if they do come up.
So the state says you can bypass the test, but then the state says you need that 95%?
Correct. You can bypass it, but you have to have 95%. So if you fall below that, basically, you get zeros averaged in to our scores.
Well, then we'll get more stated.
I think Ralph is working to change that, though. It's gotta be four, he changes it.
Okay, and that's, those were the real big highlights from the Smiths' report.
Does anyone have any questions? All right, that'll bring us to GMS.
All right. Ironically, I chose the same two big, kind of general topics. So the state testing. The big change for us this year is that we've been watching webinars on using the interim and benchmark assessments. So this is, we're going to actually replace some of our other winter assessments that we've used in the past. And this gives the students a chance to use, really, the state platform in a low-stakes environment. It gives the teachers specific feedback in a way that's more closely tied to the summative assessments in May, about where, you know, how they might adjust teaching. It gives students feedback about where their strengths and their weaknesses are. And in addition, the benchmark assessments are even more specific, they're only like 10 or 12 questions on a specific part of math, or a specific part of ELA, and they're brief. So, our teachers are currently in the process of learning about them, because they're watching webinars that were provided by the Department of Education, and by demonstrated success. And, you know, they'll all be doing their teacher training. So I just want to share that, because it means we're not gonna be doing all of the Ames Web things that we've done. We saw this as a better way to kind of prepare the students for what they're gonna see. In addition, they can use the accommodations available to them. There are things that you can make the computer do, to provide students based on documented need. You can level the playing field, and so they get to practice with those in a live testing environment. I think it's going to be a help, and so, our hope is to do them, I said by the end of January, you know, we're working toward that end really well. I'm meeting with third and fourth grade teams. I met with team leaders today, and the teams in the next week or so. So I just want you to know, that we're not just doing more testing, we're actually changing some of what we're doing, and I think it'll be a benefit, so I just want you to know about that. In addition, so Bill Atwood, I just have to commend our teachers. We did our training on the early, the delayed opening on December 5th, and what I have to really, it was a full day that he was in the building. We began with a two-hour overview during the delayed opening, and it ended with a faculty meeting, where he spent the whole hour. In between, he was doing classroom demonstrations. Here's the remarkable part for me. We quickly set up Google Docs, where the teachers could kind of input what they're doing, you know, to kind of implement some of this. And we had 12 days of school, and mind you, it was December. I know every school day is a school day, but December is a challenging month in an elementary school. And the teachers were doing it, they were actually implementing a lot of the stuff. They loved it, I felt they were really hungry for the strategies. So, we also purchased the videos where he demonstrates, it's a one-time expense, so this is good news, demonstrates the math vocabulary with hand motions to help the kids remember. The plan for the 24th is that now he's going to visit classrooms, watching teachers teaching math. And the other piece that I think is just so exciting, and kind of emblematic of my staff, is that people who don't teach math actually want to demonstrate using some of the learning strategies, because they really cross the disciplines. And so I think that's just very healthy. Unified arts, they use some of the interactive kind of things already, and so they want to be part of that as well. So, all of that is to kind of boost our students' performance under state assessments. I'm just gonna throw out one related thing, because I think it's just important to share. I'm looking forward to the winter assessments for our kindergarten. This is the first year that we've had full-day kindergarten, so I'm really looking forward to comparing, and hope for good outcomes, to the results from years past, which we also have. I anticipate it'll make a difference, so.
And I'm certain, if not this year, definitely the years going forward, with smaller class size, I think will be beneficial. Excellent. Thank you. Any questions from Mr. Thompson? All right, select letter.
Okay, thank you. You'll be happy to know, Marion Scott just stole my thunder, midterm assessments is also on ours, so I'll breeze through that pretty quickly. I just want to recognize, we had our geography bee this week, and Ryan McKinnon is our school champion, Ryan Garret is the runner-up. It was a great competition, as always, a lot of fun. Kids are very nervous on the stage, as you can imagine. They compete in front of the fifth and sixth graders, but, I mean, to them, that's like, you know, the biggest stage in the world. So, they did a great job, showed a lot of courage. Kathy Sidlow coordinated the event again, did a great job with that. And our social studies teachers did the earlier rounds in their rooms. It's just fun to do something, to, you know, highlight something like that, academic, because the kids are just so proud of it. So, Ryan moves on, Ryan McKinnon, it was Ryan and Ryan, I get them, I'll make a stop on the stage, but Ryan McKinnon moves on now to the state test, and then possibly the competition in Keene State. And the other one thing I just want to mention, overall, was just, again, the generosity in our community around the holidays, and we have the giving tree at our school, they raised over $2,500. The Litchfield Police Association, again, donated gift cards to all three schools, and those were then handed out into the community to needy families. So, just again, a lot of generosity, thank you to our community, and all those that were involved in those efforts in the holidays. So two things, I'll start with the state assessment. We are gearing up. As you know, we test every student at LMS, grades five through eight, all the content. Grades five and eight test science, and then get grades five, six, seven, and eight test reading, writing, and math. And one of the things that, I mean, this is kind of the pathetic world of a principal, I guess, that I was really getting excited about, was the format of the interim. We have never given the interim at the middle school. And to be honest, we don't do, because we do so much testing to all our students, we really prefer quick dipsticks like this, if you will. And so this one really fits in, it's always helpful when the testing environment and the whole test is not something completely separate from what they're doing every day. And now that we're one-to-one, we're gonna be able to do a lot of this assessment right in the classroom, so the math teacher can give the math assessment in their classroom. They get instant results, and it really is how assessment should work. So it will inform learning, it will inform instruction, it's really embedded right into their class. The teachers are working together to come up with their schedules and their plans, but by and large, the testing time is within a class period. So that's very helpful. And then again, the one-to-one will just make it all that much easier. As Scott mentioned, the accommodations are embedded, so all of that is just really a natural flow to sort of what is already happening in the classroom, it's not something separate. It does rehearse or prepare them well for the spring, and so, a lot of the things that we have to do to get ready for the summative in the spring, is already gonna be done and worked into the flow of what we're doing in the middle school. So, it is sort of exciting, I will say, and I'm looking forward to seeing the results, and seeing the format, and how it all flows over the next few weeks. The other thing I want to mention was, again, the technology, the one-to-one stuff, kind of what we're doing. Thank you for the support over Newzella this year, there was a lot of support over some of these web-based tools, one of them is Newzella. Last month, I talked about, I talked about some of the things that we've been able to do with the one-to-one. I wanted to just give you a quick example tonight, of what Newzella looks like, we've talked about it, and it's a web-based format, it's actually easier to present this online, but I wasn't sure what the setup was gonna be, and even though the link is on the report, it doesn't take you, you're not a pro user, you're not, you don't have the license, so when I go in, it takes me right into an article and what you can do with it. I'm gonna walk you through it, I'm not sure. There, there, no.
And Tom, these go through, and they're set up by the teachers at their Lexile, correct?
So it is. And so, what Liz refers to with Lexile is really a reading level, so every article has four to five reading levels. And this one, when you see it max, that, when you see level there, max at the top, that is the maximum level. It's a Washington Post article, depending on the source, some of them are just naturally at a higher level than others, the Washington Post happens to be at a high level, hence the max. But there are four to five reading levels per article, and so the teacher will, there's a lot of ways you can use Newzella. And the difference between sort of the low-level license in Newzella and the higher level is, as you get into the higher levels of what they can do, is they have what they call text sets within Newzella, where they'll have themes, they'll have topics, and a teacher that's looking to maybe have the students generate an argument essay, or some kind of performance assessment around argument, or something related to informational text, or a theme, they can tap into the resources right within those collections in Newzella. So this article here is, actually, I pulled this right off the front page today, and again, the reading level is there, and it's an article. And then there's different options of what the teachers can do. It syncs up with Google Classroom, so Google Classroom is the, that's really the program that they use, the teachers are using, the students are using, to submit their assignments, the teachers can submit the assignments, and it's an interactive way for students to learn and demonstrate their learning. The quiz is pretty straightforward, but I thought it was interesting, as we looked last time at some of the sample interim assessment and SAS questions, even though a lot of them are multiple choice, some of them are short answer, when you read deeper into them and what they're asking for, they really are looking for some deeper understandings than just who, what, when type questions. So, just looking at these questions, and for those that don't have it, evaluate the effectiveness of the author's support of the following claim, quakes, earthquakes should start to wind down to more nuisance rumbles by the start of spring. Which of the claims does the author support the least? Which statements accurately reflect the article's central ideas? And it's not just one idea, it's not just one statement, it's more than one, which we see that over and over again on the state assessment, where they're looking for more than one correct answer. Read the following two details and select, from the article, and select the answer that best explains how these details develop a central idea of the article. So, it's a lot about pulling evidence, and when they're reading, you don't have it in front of you, but there's another piece to this for each article, that focuses on what they call power words, those are content vocabulary words, and then they each have a writing prompt that goes with that. And again, depending on what the teacher is doing, and the students, but for this one, it was write a short paragraph that explains the central idea of the article, use at least two details from the article to support your response. So over and over again, it's looking for not just an answer, but evidence that backs your answer, and supports your answer. And then the quiz is what you have in front of you, is the comprehension piece. So, this one's pretty straightforward, this is just one article, but teachers can do things, like I say, around themes, there's research, a lot of research, and the Newzella stuff has been vetted, is very reliable, so that's a nice, safe environment for students to work. And this is just one web tool, but I thought it would be sort of a helpful thing, when we talk about it, what it looks like, what an article looks like. Current events are a really nice way to tap into student interests. Sometimes the students can look for an article and find one, and they have different topics, science, sports, general news, and so on. So, there's a lot of things teachers can do with this in their classrooms, and we continue to have conversations and sharing on the staff, around how people are using it. I think I had mentioned, we have one teacher who was trained as a trainer, and actually did some traveling over the summer, did some training on Newzella. So, a lot of possibilities, and Dr. Jettie and I were walking around one day, and when we walked through a room, they were doing an article on this, and the beauty of it is, in a one-to-one environment, is the kids can all be reading articles, but they're at various Lexile levels. And it really, it's very intuitive, and adjusts to where their baseline is set at the beginning of the year, so, and then it adjusts accordingly as they go on, so.
We have the kids read three different ones, and then it's set their Lexile after taking the quiz. Now we're doing, what is it, should plastic straws be banned? They're reading three different articles for, and have to defend and have a counterclaim, and this is in sixth grade. And that's really a hot topic now, paper straws, plastic straws, pollution, animals.
I think I've showed you before, some of the writing prompts that show up on the SAS, almost all of them are, you know, their argument-type form of opinion, but they give them multiple sources, multiple articles, that they have to pull evidence from to demonstrate their ability to build an argument, so.
Thank you very much. Does anybody have any questions? Bring us to Mr. Leclerc. Sorry, Mr. Lonigan. I would've been there.
Again?
No.
Okay, so, some highlights, I'd like to just emphasize here from my principal's report. Student of the Month, Star of the Month, three students, great kids, Matty Green-Hall, who worked really hard with some other students, mentoring them and assisting them. And then Emma Montero and Emily Gamache are just two outstanding young leaders at the school, and they really do a terrific job, so I just want to make sure they get a little bit of credit here. Also, we had Garrett Walker, one of our students who was inducted into... Also, we had Garrett Walker, one of our students who was inducted into Pinkerton National Technical Honor Society, which is really cool. Welding student, works real hard over there. I know the teacher personally, and he just thinks the world of Garrett, so I just wanted to mention him for doing a great job over at Pinkerton. Sort of repeating what Tom said, incredible generosity prior to the holidays from our entire community here. Our Giving Tree, Students Against Destructive Decisions, we came up with over $2,500, again, similar to Tom's. Amazing contribution, steer to needy families. We did care packages for the military, student scholarship fund. All the groups just did an amazing job, so I just want to make sure we recognize that. Dave Gingras is our Golden Bell Staff Award winner for December. He was put forward by Jill Anderson from November. Dave's just a great teacher, terrific graduation speaker last year, who really gets the kids and understands them, and he's a good collaborator with his colleagues, so that was a fitting award for him. Our alumni panel, so we had nine students, eight of them are students, one of them from Auburn, who came in and sort of gave our juniors a view of what life is like after Campbell. And they're terrific people, they're instant age from a year out to 10 years out from Campbell, so it was really awesome to have them come in and talk to the students. Our PSAT scores went out to parents, so we had, we had nine, 10, 11 grade students, took the PSAT back in October. Scores came to us in December, so we had a chance to roll out the scores with the students, explain it to the underclassmen, and then offered the opportunity for parents to come in and to have those scores explained to them as well. Our data team is looking at that information now, we spent some time today, looking back at SAT scores from our juniors from last year. And we're going to, what we're going to start doing is pulling out what are the key challenging questions that the students had difficulty on. Once we figure out what those are, then what we'll do is forward those questions to the teachers, the English and the math teachers in particular, to give them sense. But also, some of those questions are science-based questions, some of them are social studies-based questions, so we're going to make sure the staff has those, so we can be attentive to what some of the students' needs are as we move forward here. We, I'm going to be careful about saying this, but we have decided to take the Youth Risk Behavior Survey.
Have you now?
So, Bill Hicks, our Adres Counselor, is going to administer that. It's done every two years. I have a little bit of a different perspective on it, I think there's some valuable information we get out of that in terms of students' behaviors, particularly with respective decision-making on drugs and alcohol and sex and violence and those things. And we've used that information to change our health courses and to communicate through student assemblies, some of the concerns that we want them to be attentive to. So, I think it's worth doing. It's also important in that local agencies, so Nashua in particular, Merrimack, some of those agencies use the information from the IRBS to apply for grants. And if they don't get people in the communities, students showing that there's a need, it makes it more challenging for them to get some of the money that they can use for our students.
Oh, is this different from the last survey you did? Didn't you just do another survey? There was something?
The Youth Risk Behavior is the significant one that we do. And that's, it's every two years. So, we did it back, my first year here, sixteen, seventeen, well, actually, in the spring of seventeen. Now, we're going to do it again. So, we can also look at those and see what the changes have been.
Is that the CDC survey that he was talking about?
That's the CDC survey, that's true.
And I think just a couple of things, you know, a lot of it is in the way it's administered. I'm sure that we addressed the need for students to take this very seriously and how that drives. The other piece for the board to remember is that when we analyze it, we look at how Campbell High School compares to other schools. And so, you know, if it really was this big laughing survey, then when our data is askew, in other words, we have way more kids reporting something, you know, you're comparing it to everybody else taking it askew also. So, I think in the long run, this really does provide us some really solid bearing and is worth continuing.
And it's anonymous, and it's voluntary. So, parents, this is one of those, they want to opt their students out, they contact the guidance council, we don't want our student in there, and they don't have to participate. And the student, even in the course of the administration, can decide, I don't want to do this, and opt out of it, okay?
Or I don't want to answer this question, and skip it. It's perfectly fine.
Good news, we were reaccredited by NIESC, which is, which is awesome. Terrific, a lot of hard work by a lot of people in terms of, you know, the work that we had to do for the two years. Now, we've got the recommendations to work on, so that process is continuing. We're heading into course selection, so we'll look at the program of studies shortly, but on January 30th, we're going to have an extended advisory for freshmen, sophomores, and juniors, where they have a chance to come through the hallway, freshman at one point, sophomores at another, juniors at another, and talk with teachers about elective courses. They'll have a sense of what they're going to take for English and math and science and social studies, but the elective courses. So, we're going to have all our elective teachers out there with students, kind of assisting and trying to get kids interested in taking some of those other courses. So, that's important. For our career sort of emphasis, we had the Career Fair back in October, but Jody is coordinating with Michelle up in counseling, a career breakfast, and to bring in some adults in the community who come from course, excuse me, careers where you don't have the traditional two-year, four-year college pathos. So, we're going to have a breakfast, invite some kids in to meet with some adults, and for those kids who are not found and determined to go to college, here's some other ways to think about what careers might be available if you're not on that traditional path.
Oh, that's great. Like electricians and plumbers and things like that?
Yep, yep. Well, you might go through an apprenticeship program and may not go through a two-year, four-year college. And in terms of some of the other things we're working on, we're looking at advisory in the school schedule, okay? There's some, there are some things we'd like to do with students that our current schedule doesn't make possible, we don't have anything definitive in mind at the time, but we are considering how advisory plays into our schedule and then what the opportunities are for interventions with students and enrichment and some of those things. So, Mike Perez is working on that. We're wrapping up work-study practices. We took some good steps forward at our last faculty meeting, and we're, we've got some ideas about incorporating those core values and beliefs into it, so that'll be the next stage in this. So, and then finally, we're doing some work, starting with the leadership team on competency recovery and summer school, what that really ought to look like. So, Jody's providing me some information from other schools and how they handle that. And then, we're going to take the leadership team with the CFs and people and say, okay, let's start digging, what we can do to improve what that system. So, that's where we are for December, and I know that we want to sort of look forward and start looking at senior projects first. Or are questions on the report?
Do we get a report?
I submitted a report, yes.
It's on the CHS link. That's the general report.
I saw the general report. Is it a list of what kids are doing? Is that what you wanted, Brian?
Hold on. I went to like the senior project link, I didn't know there was a link.
Okay, there are several.
That was what, that link is what was just summarized, so, some of the overview stuff.
Now, what I'm looking for is, I'm looking for a list. Stop it, sophomores. I'm looking for a list, I'm looking for who's responsible for that student, who the student is, who the sponsor is, what the project is, and what the dates are.
So, what I, are you looking for both senior and junior sophomore project? Okay. I sort of put some PowerPoints, or actually, I have the staff put some PowerPoints together. So, you've had a chance, I'm assuming. If there are things in there that concern you or don't concern you, it's pretty self-explanatory.
I think, boy, just, to be honest with you, just, we'd like to take a look as far as what the projects are.
Absolutely.
Because there's been communication before, we've had talk as far as the projects, and if you can compile it that way.
Sure. So, what I did is, I pulled off from 2017, 18, and current senior projects. So, what you're going to see in what's in front of you is you're going to see our senior project summaries for 1819, it's the first three pages, and then you'll look at 1718. I removed student names from it.
Yes.
Okay?
Yeah.
So, but I left, I left the advisors on the 1819. Those are the actual advisors in the class, in the students' advisory. Those are not the mentors for the project.
Right.
Okay? So, I removed, I removed those names from it. I wasn't, I wasn't thinking that you wanted that information. I don't have it, I don't believe from last year's senior projects, I believe all I have from last year's senior projects are the names, but I can check that information. But I can also take the current year's senior projects and grab the information for you if you want to imply provided at the next meeting without, or for your next meeting without any problem. But I think one of the concerns was about coaching. Was that one of the concerns?
I thought that was a sophomore thing, not a senior thing.
Correct. And that's one of the things I wanted to mention. Our senior projects, I actually was scrutinizing, okay, because coaching is a popular thing. For our senior projects, we only had 11 students this year, and I think seven last year who chose coaching as an aspect of their senior project.
It wasn't just, it was actually all of them, and we were just looking, so we could look at each student. We don't need to have a name. What their project is, do you have the advisor there, it's approved, we got that, but who's your sponsor?
Okay, yeah, absolutely.
And then, I know some of these are pretty self-explanatory, like what they're doing, I know what pantene is, it's when they get their haircut. But I mean, if you can give, on some of these, a little bit more information, if that's possible, like exactly what the description is or what?
I pulled this directly off the Google form that they had for the students. So, in terms of information, there isn't a whole lot more. What I might have to do is talk with Lynn Nagy, or possibly reach out to all the advisors and say, okay, is this, can we get this to be more specific? That might be a little bit challenging to do, but I can look back at that and see what kind of information I have. I didn't edit those topics.
Like, even if it can just be like a one line, like what it is, like, I'm looking at like two of them right here. Suicide awareness, I mean, what's, I don't know what the person's doing. Believer Award.
Camperino. The believer award is a, I can explain that, that's a Dr. Angie, raising money for the Dr. Angie.
Yeah. So, that's just something as simple as that, just to give us, and then like, who the sponsors?
Sure.
For both sophomore and seniors, is what we're looking for.
And for sophomore projects, I didn't print off the sophomore projects, I just took a quick look at it. But for sophomore projects, I actually looked at this senior class as sophomores. We had 54 students do coaching for sophomore projects.
This year?
For their, for their sophomore year, for this senior class, my current senior class.
Oh, yeah.
For their sophomore projects, we had 54 students who did, who did coaching.
Out of 122.
Out of 122, correct. Yeah.
And then, they're doing it again as their senior projects?
I'm not sure if they're doing it again, because I don't have the names for sophomore project to correlate against this.
And it's a 15-hour, so sophomores are 30 hours and senior projects are 40 hours?
Forty, they're 40 hours, and then if they go beyond the 40 hours, they go to 68, they can get a quarter credit. If they go up to 100 and something, they can get a half credit, and they can go up to three quarters of a credit. So, they can get credit for senior project.
So, Brian, if Bailey wanted to do coaching lacrosse, Jen couldn't sign off on her, they need someone else to do it, yeah.
Correct, right. It has to, it can't be a parent, we don't allow parents to be mentors for that. Yeah. But I can get you the mentors, and I can, and I can talk with Lynn, and we can figure out some better phrasing for some of those.
Yeah, and like I said, we can get sophomores and then seniors separately. And don't get me wrong, like you mentioned coaching, because, and you just mentioned 50-some on for sophomores. I can tell you right now, the town sports wouldn't be able to survive without all the volunteers that we do get, as far, there's so many teams, there's so many needs.
Absolutely, yeah. And just so you know, for those sophomore projects, 42 of those 54 were done in Litchfield. 12 of them were done in other towns, Clonan-Derry, Manchester, Nashua, or other towns. So, even though they're coaching here, they're also finding other places to get that experience as well.
So, they need to do, they need to do their hours in their topic, and then they also write a paper?
There's a paper. For the sophomore project, there's a paper, and there's a presentation within their advisory as well.
Okay.
Okay, for the senior project, they have to do some sort of a presentation. We open up the gym and the hallways here, and we have our senior project night, so that'll be on May 30th right now, is what we have it scheduled for. So, the public is welcome to come in, talk with the students, the students have their computers, or they have a poster board set up, or they have, you know, actual materials and supplies that they use in doing what they're doing.
Is the paper a reflection of their project, or is it more of a research paper?
No, it's a reflection of their experience in doing the project.
We had a, we had a senior project in my, my senior year of high school, and it was very similar. We had to do 40 hours with a mentor and, you know, have it approved by the school. I think it went a step further, maybe, in that the research paper, it was a research paper about the topic that you were looking at. So, for mine, I took piano lessons because I had never learned how to play piano as a kid. And then, my paper was on using music in education for young children, because that's what I wanted to do. So, I got my hours doing piano lessons and working in a preschool, interning in a preschool. And then, the presentation was done in front of a panel, a community panel, instead of other students. It was kind of a pass/fail thing, but you had to do a 20-minute presentation. So, I didn't know if there'd been any discussion about?
We've, we've been looking at senior projects, and actually, I talked with Lynn Nagy in particular, she's one of the coordinators for it, about, she's from Bedford, and Bedford has a really rigorous senior project program. Diane Angelini, my math CF, also has talked about theirs. So, we're looking at that, but we haven't made any decisions, but I do think it needs to be, there needs to be some rigor added to our senior project. But it's a passion project, you know, it's about what kids are really interested in and what strikes at their, you know, you're at the heart of their head about things that are important to them. But I, but I think there are really, there are really incredible projects that our kids do, but I think there are also, I said, there's ways to improve it.
Okay, that's fair.
And if it helps, Mary and I have had a conversation with Bill also about sort of seeing the project through this year. I mean, we're in the middle of it at this point, so we don't want to change something midstream. And then, committing some opportunity during the summer to have a curriculum development effort around what should senior project look like next year. So, that's kind of the general bearing.
I know for me, a 10-page paper was a huge task as a, as a senior, but, and then I got to college and I was like, 10-page paper?
Piece of cake.
Right, right.
Absolutely. Okay. All right. Awesome. So, the program of studies?
Yep.
Go over that? Okay. So, Jody is normally my wingman on this, or wingwoman, I should say. Not here this evening, so hopefully, I won't bodge this too much, but she's put me in good standing here. So, do you want me to project it, or are you looking at it yourselves?
Just looking at it.
Okay, great. All right, so I'll just scroll through it fairly quickly here. You know, at the, at the opening to it, essentially, you said a little bit more than changing dates, you know, and updating the dates. We scroll on to page, looks like page, we, page three, we changed hip-hop, hip-hop, the hip-hop class is a great class, but it's not an NCAA-eligible course.
Can we just go back to page one?
Yep, sure.
Because I know we've had some conversation on the senior English course.
Oh, yeah, yeah. So, what we did with senior English is, we, senior English was a required course. We removed that, okay? Part of the reason we removed it is, some students we've had have taken senior college English. Well, okay, if you can take a senior college English, shouldn't that count for your English, your senior English course here at Campbell High School? There's that one piece. The second, the second piece of that is, well, okay, there are multiple pieces. We looked at electives for students, okay? And shouldn't their electives be able to count for an English, a required English credit at Campbell? The third piece was that your junior year course is the really rigorous, demanding writing, reading course. That's the one, if you're talking about looking at college preparation, that's the one that you want your kids to be doing well in, and to be taking. When you get to senior year, your top student's college was going to take senior English. They're either going to take AP English, okay, or they're going to take your own senior English course or your senior English course, because they're going to need strong writing skills. But it isn't for everybody, I'm not sure that it needs to be everybody.
Was that made policy, Michelle? Senior English?
No, senior English was not in the policy.
No. Yeah, it was in, it was in the handbook, but it wasn't in the policy.
And the handbook language was more restricted than the policy, if I remember correctly.
Yes, yeah.
Okay. So, this kind of gets it back?
Yep.
I really like that, adding all the writing to junior, that's when they're starting to apply for colleges or?
Absolutely. Yeah, that's, that's the really demanding course. And again, if you're taking English your senior year, you're going to get a demanding college-level course, and those kids who are interested in going on, they're going to take it.
Right.
Yeah, yeah. Okay.
Yep. Yep, now you go to page three.
Page, okay, so moving on to page three, and I'm actually looking at the program of studies. History, hip-hop is not N C A A approved, so we, so we just made sure we included that.
I think we're looking at different things.
Oh, are you?
We're on the summaries, actually, I think.
Okay, fine, okay. Oh, I'm looking at the program itself.
No, we're just going through the changes.
Okay, so fine, okay. So let me go back to page one.
So we're on the summary.
So page one of the summary.
Yeah.
Correct, page one, so the early college, college program is all new, okay? The information's just updating information to account for the fact that the state may pay for some of those courses for students, so it really just takes that into consideration. And it also just highlights the dual enrollment opportunities in those sense.
I had a question about the early college program. Is there any cost for that? Because the dual enrollment costs are stated, and I didn't know if these...
There, there are, for them, okay? The challenge, the challenge we're going to be facing is we, we currently have some students who, which, my understanding is we've had them in the past, who their senior year have taken college-level courses. So they weren't even at Campbell High School, okay? They were often taking the courses. Parents were paying for those courses. We have some students who are probably going to start, be starting to do that, if not the start of their junior year, midway through their junior year, and into their senior year. So we have to provide that opportunity for them to do that, you know? They're not going to be satisfied with the courses we have, and they're not going to be necessarily challenged by some of the courses we have.
How does that affect their G P A then, if they're taking college courses?
It's going to get averaged into their G P A with us.
Okay.
And this is one of the things we've talked about as well, is looking at the students who are taking V-Lax or are taking C T E courses at other schools, is, you know, if you're, if you're going to Pinkerton getting an A in a welding class, okay, it's, it ought to weigh into your G P A here at Campbell High School. So we're looking at doing that, there's been, you know, the tradition in the past has been you don't weigh students' courses in other, in other schools into your G P A. It just doesn't make a whole lot of sense when students are working hard, learning, and it's part of our program, even though we're, you know, sending them out to another school.
I can see going to another school, but you're looking at V-Lax also doing that?
Say that again?
I can see the student going to another school.
Yep.
But you're also looking at V-Lax?
We're looking at V-Lax. That's, that's one that we're a little, we're not so sure about V-Lax, but it's one that we've thought, okay, if a student is doing a V-Lax course, and it's, and they're not easy courses, some of those courses are really challenging courses. So clearly we won't do anything for putting that quote...
I can play that game.
Yep. Okay.
But I wouldn't.
Moving, moving on, standardized testing programs, we removed dates, we revised the description to include the P S A T eight-nine in sophomore juniors, taking the P S A T into, and we changed it to the S A S A A R assessment instead of N C A P science. Family, consumer science.
Oh, wait, I have a question about, I'm actually looking at the program of studies, but on, on the standardized tests, A P tests?
Yep.
Are administrative students that have completed an A P course, do students pay a fee for, to take the test?
They do. They do, it's eighty to ninety dollars.
Can we put that in, just so parents are, I'm just reading, reading it as a parent, I'm, you know, I would want to know that.
Okay. I would hesitate, well, we can add it in, I'm just concerned about, not a dollar amount, but students are...
Just the cost associated.
There's a cost associated with the test, not the price.
Has anyone ever complained about that?
No, and, and also, my understanding is if we have students who are coming from challenging economic backgrounds, we cover the testing costs for them, okay? So, so if they have complained, it doesn't come to me, we're taking care of it internally. Okay. Okay. Then, consumer science, child development one, we removed this, the note that says the course may be eligible for college credit. And that's simply because Lynn Nagy having to meet the expectations of both those programs, it was like juggling pizzas, you know, it just, it wasn't going to work. Yep, yep. Health and physical education, we opened RAD to sophomores. We did that because we have RAD two now, and so RAD two is open to juniors and seniors, so it just makes sense to have RAD one available to sophomores. Humanities English, this is the, we moved senior English, I'm not sure I need to belabor that, so that's all set. Hip-hop, not N C A A approved. We added the Vietnam War era. I C T is going through an interesting set of changes at the state right now. We've updated the competencies, we've, but, but the state is, the minimum standards haven't determined yet what those are, okay? So we're kind of at a crunch time where we may have to, after the fact, sort of revise this, at least, because the course may change in terms of what...
It hasn't been going on for like a year.
It has been, and, yeah, the state has approved the minimum, they've approved the standards, but they haven't approved the language of the minimum standards yet, or, and haven't finalized a lot of the certification and when this is all going to be required. So it's, there are a lot of pieces that are up in the air. I actually was in contact with Nate Green at the D O E early this week, really trying to get some more information so that we could specifically in the, because I C T itself, by the, by the change to the standard in the R S A is gone away.
Yeah.
But they haven't formalized really the division, it's going to be broken into computer science, digital literacy, and then engineering technologies. We know that, but what exactly qualifies? So there's, there's still a lot of gray. So as I said to Bill, like, for right now, let's leave it as is until, until we have a little bit more detail on some of the, the real small decisions that the state still needs to make.
So is, I know I'm kind of projecting, I, there was a paragraph in the program of studies about transfer students can either take the pathways class, or they can present a portfolio of that, you know, of meeting all those, those different competencies. Do you see us going that, in that direction as a district?
I, there's been a lot of conversation about that. I don't know if I'm going to get myself in trouble right now, but I'm going to go there.
Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to put so much...
No, that's okay. There's been a lot of conversation around the I C T pathways requirement, in part because we are doing a lot of more advanced coding at the middle school, and then to have kids come up here and that have to be their, their requirement, it sort of goes against what this, the changes that the state has made. So we are, you know, I've been in a lot of discussions with Bill and with Sean about what, as we make these changes, what is that going to look like? And moving forward, will we, will we keep I C T pathways as a, as a required course? I lean towards no.
All right, class that off for next year, or incoming freshmen. Write that down.
My daughter's in it now.
Oh, boy.
So, those changes are coming.
Yeah.
It's just, it's a little bit slower than we anticipated, because we are still stuck on some of the, waiting on the state for some of the decisions.
Okay.
Mary, have we checked with our peer cohort group to see how others are handling that?
I actually have it on the agenda for, we have a meeting next week.
Yeah.
And it's on the agenda for that. It's, when the last state's South Central C I A meeting, it's, it's been a lot of the same question marks, and the conversation just kind of spins round and round, because nobody is really sure how far to go until the state has solidified a lot of their...
The future thinking with where the state solidifies, I guess my question would be, how many currently require a course as evidence of that versus are accepting a portfolio or evidence of the eighth grade that says you're set, you know? So I'd just be curious to see where we fall on that.
Okay.
It may help, because then wherever the state lands, so what's the best method to meet that?
I think it'd be great if we had some guidance on that.
Well, I think when, when you read the, you know, I've, I've, I've been through some of the technical trainings and stuff on the changes that have been made, it really is the, the way it's written for the minimum standards as the drafts have gone forward is, it, it takes away that, the standards of digital literacy for high school, and moves them more towards the elementary level, having the focus down there more on the digital literacy portion. And then the, the required class for, they say ninth or tenth grade, but for the high school being a true computer science focused class.
I, I know, so the M V solution to it, so going back to past history, we embedded it in the senior project. So it was a quarter of the senior project course involved all of the competencies that were tied to I C T. So it was a graduation requirement, because senior project was a graduation requirement, but it was real applied use of it versus a course that was, here's how to do it, it was sort of embedded. So anyway, just, there are alternative ways to meet it, other than a ninth-grade course that, that can feel redundant.
Right, spinning wheel.
Yeah.
And I know, looking back, we had a similar course at Timberlane, and that was a, when I started, it was a requirement, but it was, we saw the same kind of thing, that it just didn't meet the needs of all of the kids, so it was still offered, but it no longer was the requirement for graduation. They could take other options that might, you know, for those kids that were already heavily STEM involved and to that nature, they could go into more advanced computer science, as opposed to having to take the, you know, Microsoft Office or whatever that entry-level course was.
Yeah, we let kids do a portfolio. Yeah, and at any point, you know, they can just keep accumulating, cumulating, and they were done, they were done, yeah. Okay. Digital multimedia, removed multimedia authoring and just added digital multimedia. Website design, added a note that a fee may be reimbursed, this is one of those courses that they may get reimbursed through the state of New Hampshire, same with programming one.
So where's, where are the fees?
There's a fee for, you can get course credit, even college credit for it, yep.
It's not a fee for the course?
No, no, it's not a fee for the class, no, it's just simply for college.
Those are running start?
Yeah, the project running.
Project running start.
Yep. Programming two, it's a full-year course worth a credit, not a half-credit. A P programming three is a completely new course description. Digital publishing and design, fee may be reimbursed again, project running start. Advanced website design, simple wording change. And advanced applications, again, project running start, dual enrollment credit, so they just added those, that information to it. Computer animation, new course, and new course description. Mathematics, we just added a new table for traditional math sequencing, so parents and students would have a sense of where they went from one section of math to the next in a more logical way. We removed the transitions to algebra class. Honors Algebra one, we added the word honors to the title. So, and added a sentence, just added a sentence, faster-paced studying in the context, more detail. Precalc, added one final sentence to it. Advanced math topic, we changed this back to advanced math topics rather than applied college mathematics, added a new description, new prerequisites, really going back to what the course was previously. Added a new course, science and natural disasters two. And honors physics, this is now eligible for running start credit, because Rosanna Dubey is, is certified by Nashua Community College. We removed environmental science, we have the A P environmental anyhow. And A P bio daily, changed the prerequisites to completion of chemistry, no longer take me concurrently, we're finding that students really needed the chemistry background to do well with the A P course. Technology education, we did some, some, some changes here in terms of prerequisites. John was finding some real challenges with students who didn't have geometry as a prerequisite doing woodworking and doing things that he's doing in those classes. Higher math skills were, were necessary. Intermediate woodworking, we, we changed the, the description to that, made it more relevant to West Tech Design. Electricity and home improvement, we added geometry. And then Alvin, we added new C T E options for them, welding, computer science, and Air Force J R O T C, and we removed the modern agriculture one and two, and agriculture one and two.
Is that due to lack of interest?
It's due to lack of interest, yep, yep. And those are based on what they're having over there.
Um, I guess this is more of a note for Jody.
Yep.
But thank you for updating the science...
Progressions?
Progressions?
Yep.
As a parent of a freshman, that was not very well communicated to us as parents, that, you know, we, my daughter took the test and was placed into honors biology.
Yep.
And we, we didn't know what that meant for her down the line.
Right.
But that means that she has required now to take two addition, she has to take chemistry or physics and environmental science.
Yeah, that was one of the things that caught us a little bit off guard.
Yeah.
Because you're required to have a physical science course in high school.
Right, right.
And that's the one challenge of jumping over freshman science, is it automatically forces you to take either, I think, principles of engineering, I think chemistry, though, chemistry counts as a, if I'm correct, as a physical science, or physics as well.
Right.
So it kind of shifts your focus a little bit.
Right, if we had known that going in, I think, you know, we might have chosen, she might have chosen to take the freshman science, so that she could take electives for the, you know, later on.
Right, right, and that's, I know, that's something that caught us...
I didn't, I didn't think of that either.
Yeah.
Yep.
And my other concern was, as a freshman, she's taking an honors sophomore class, and, but she, she's fine, she can do it, but I was kind of taken aback that the, the option didn't exist for her to take just a regular biology class.
Ah, yeah. And I think the recommendation is, when you have your students who are coming in, who are smart, hard-working, capable students, you want to kind of step them up to...
Right into honors?
Right into the honors program, yeah.
Not that she's struggling with it, but it was...
Right. It's a challenging course.
Yeah.
Absolutely, really challenging course, yep.
Why Tommy didn't take it. And that, not because I knew that, but because I knew there was a lot of computer stuff, online notebooks, and that is not a strength. And that's the only reason why, but I can see, that's interesting. That gives me a whole new perspective for my freshman next year.
Absolutely.
Thank you for bringing that up.
You're welcome.
And it's something we've talked with Bill, and Jody, Jody knows this as well, but in those conversations with the teachers and with the students as they're coming up, that's the one piece you have to be careful about.
Yeah, she enjoys science, but it's not necessarily a field that she wants to go into, so now she has to.
Right, exactly. No, I understand that, I wasn't a science guy either, on the first one.
Right. Luckily, my husband was a science guy, so...
Any more, any more questions?
Nothing, I had the same comment and not, not realizing kind of the implications, but I thought it would be helpful for parents and kids to have that sequencing. So it's in there for science and math, or is that, is the plan to put it in there for English too?
I think English and social studies are pretty well outlined.
They're fairly straightforward.
They're the foundational, uh, required, okay.
Right.
So then that's everything.
Are you looking for a motion?
Yes.
You looking for a motion?
Yes, absolutely.
Is this the first time that you've included the courses, the C T E courses at Alvin in this, or is this, has that, has that always been included?
I have to ask Jody that question.
I just couldn't bring it up.
Typically, they are.
They've been in the program of studies.
Oh, okay.
I remember seeing them in the last year.
Good.
Yeah.
Make a motion to approve the program of studies.
I second.
And you want to approve it with the change that?
Yes, correct.
Tina asked about as far as the cost?
Oh, the fees.
The A P testing.
Including the A P testing fees.
I'll get a person a second. Further discussion? Hearing non-alaws in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained. Excellent. You guys said nope?
Tom tapped away on the door.
Been a long day. Thank you very much, have a good evening. Drive careful in case there's ice out there again.
Yeah. Black hair is what leaves.
As they head out, the board should know that the principals tomorrow are at Kim Marshall, who is really a leading educator in New England. And so he's coming to, actually, I don't even know, coming to New Hampshire anyway. And so all the principals are attending that, so that's a commitment that we made. So tomorrow I will be based at G M S for the day to make sure that if anything goes on, I'm there. Mary is always based at L M S, so she will be there. And Corey has the high school well-covered, so we have a backup plan. But enjoy the day tomorrow, Kim's amazing educator. Let's hope it's late enough that students at C H S are not finding out that Corey's in charge tomorrow.
Mike, Jody, and...
Well, Jody will be here, so we won't have to...
Good night, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'm working at five four oh four, we're in.
Yeah, I want an update tomorrow, please.
Yeah, 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 yeah. Put a sign up, Brian.
More bacon.
That might work. All right, so I'll bring us to unfinished business of Policy F F naming of facilities. So just quickly, we made a couple of tweaks to it. So if you look at page one of Policy F F, under proposals, and it says core facilities, and then we added what core facilities are in to make sure that that was clear. We're talking gyms, libraries, auditoriums, fields, tracks, cafeterias, multipurpose rooms, all right? And the other tweak that we made is on page two, and it's in the dedication part up top. We just added the volunteer community leader piece so that we can do dedication. I think it was implied in the process down below, but we made it really clear by adding it up to the top piece. So those are the tweaks that I think the board asked us for on December nineteenth.
If I make a motion and we, to change, to change something, do we have to go through the first reading, second reading?
What are you changing?
Well, I want to...
You're not to make a motion?
Well, I was, yeah, I think I'm going to make a motion. I'll make a motion. I'd like to change the three-years waiting period to...
Where is that?
Um, in the naming, the naming paragraph, the, the minimum of three years must have elapsed from either the date of completion of service or death of an individual. I'd like to make it two years.
Do you make a motion or a second?
Second.
Further discussion?
She wants to change it from three years to two years instead of three years.
Hearing non-alaws in favor signify by saying aye.
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 All those opposed signify by saying, opposed, aye. Motion carries three-two.
Do we have to go back through the first reading, second reading?
No.
I think we beat this one to death.
I make a motion to approve Policy F F.
Second.
Further discussion? Hearing non-alaws in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, abstained. Always bring it back next year and change it to three.
Exactly, yeah.
All right, community forum, and no one's here. Brings non-public, session hour say ninety-one dash A colon three-one-one. A dismissal promotion or compensation of any public employee or disciplining of such employee where the investigator any charges against him unless the employee, factor one, has a right to a meeting and two, requests that the meeting be open, in which case the request shall be granted. The hiring of any person or public employee matters, which have discussed in public, but likely affect adversely the reputation of any persons other than a member of the body or agency itself, unless such person requests an open meeting. Yes?
Yes.
Yes.